The time is 5:30 PM on Monday, May 1st, and I'd like to call this work session to order. We are going to amend the agenda a little bit, given there are lobbyists are not on Zoom yet. So we... Oh, okay. And we will also be moving city updates by Ms. Solano to after a presentation. So Clyde, are you sending the link? Okay.
It says we can't get on word session.
Yeah, I think Clyde's working on it. Sorry for calling it so early. You can talk amongst yourselves, I guess. Okay, so we're gonna start with updates because our lobbyists still are not on Zoom. So Ms. Solano, if you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council, and Mayor Gradisar. I do have a few updates this evening. Last week, I skipped the COVID update, but the numbers look good, so I'll share with everyone this evening. The one-week positive cumulative count was 32.4 and the rate just over 5% with eight days of declining or stable hospitalizations at Parkview. Let me catch a breath here. I'll move over to the ARPA update. Last week, council asked for the expenditures to date of the Million Dollar Trash Program and the remaining balance. I will send those to you electronically, but expenditures to date have been $193,620, and remaining balance is $806,379 out of the total million. And out of the 300,000 ARPA funds, which I believe was out of lost revenue for Team Up to Clean Up work, the expenditures to date have been $75,399 and the remaining balance 224. The schedules, when I send them to you, will be broke out between payroll and capital items and supplies and probably some marketing pieces in both of those budgets. Additionally, in ARPA, on this evening, on the agenda, there is a presentation to support paid union requesting councils support for paid union employees who worked more than 50% of the time during the COVID height of March to April, of March of 2020 to April of 2021, to receive essential pay. And our HR Director and our Page Union President will be presenting on the agenda this evening. The amount is just over $167,000. And then I can move on to remind everyone that the Team Up to Clean Up Community Trash Dump Day is this coming Saturday. It's here, is May the 6th, 2023. It is no cost to the public. All of the press releases have gone out. The information is out on the city's social media. There was printed press items and electronic in the Pueblo Chieftain, and it does open this weekend, and they still are looking for volunteers. It's not too late to sign up. And then I also wanted to remind everyone that the municipal court warrant forgiveness program is still coming. That is scheduled on Saturday, May the 20th. And if there is an outstanding city warrant, there is, they're opening the courts that morning with Judge Sykes. Saturday, May 20th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. If you'd like additional information, please call the following municipal court number, 719-562-3850. And that does conclude city updates for this evening. If you have questions or directions or requests for additional information.
Great. Thank you for that, those updates, Ms. Solano. What questions are there from council? For the upcoming Team Up to Clean Up, are we good with volunteers, or are we still looking for volunteers?
They are still open for volunteers, but I don't know how many we have so far, and I'm not sure. She's not shaking her head that she knows. She's... Yep.
And what time should volunteers show up to the state fairgrounds? At 7:30 on Saturday? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Um, other questions from council? Great. Seeing none, I'm gonna move along on our agenda. I still do not see Mr. Romero on Zoom for our lobby update.
They just got the link, and I think they'll be joining shortly.
Okay. Hi, Gil. We can't hear you, Gil. You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
There you go. Yeah, welcome, Gil.
I apologize for the delay in the link.
Yeah, whenever you're ready, Gil, and if you can talk loudly, so you're just coming across a little silent.
Yeah, I don't know why. Let me just double-check to see, because I can tell that I'm not coming in clearly.
That's better, Gil, right? Just like that.
You're on mute. It's a Monday, no worries. Yeah.
How about now?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Thank you for, for, I apologize for being late on the call. We didn't have the correct link. Just briefly to kind of give you a status report, we're in the last week of the legislative session. There are still two significant bills that we're following for the city of Pueblo. The one that I really want to bring to your attention first is House Bill 1294. That's the air bill. And I want to report to you, because I was, I met with Everas folks this morning at the Capitol, and I said that I was gonna be in your working session this evening, and they said to express to City Council, the mayor, how appreciative they are that the city is working so hard to kill this bill. The bill has been significantly amended. It doesn't have quite the same impact that it did before, but it's still not a bill that I think the city of Pueblo should support. The Colorado Municipal League stands in opposition to the bill yet, and so we're continuing to oppose the bill, and Everas is continuing to oppose the bill. One of the things, and I still think we have a really good shot at getting this bill killed, just because for the last six, seven, eight days of the session, some of these bills aren't gonna survive. There's still about over 200 bills in the process, and the governor just introduced probably one of the more significant bills in session with regard to property tax, and I want to talk to you about that at the end, even though this is a county responsibility. I think you may get a number of calls from your constituents. We're gonna send you some talking points tomorrow so that as this is rolled out and it's in the paper and the chieftain, I want you to be able to have the best information available. One of the things I really want to stress to you, and this is sort of a, you know, something that you should really consider post-session, is one of the things that if this bill survives, even in its weakened condition, one of the things, one of the things that's gonna happen this summer is this legislative interim committee. And I was talking to folks from the Colorado Municipal League, and they said, "We really hope Pueblo gets engaged in this interim committee." That interim committee is gonna have 12 legislators. I've been talking to Senator Hendrickson. I'd like to see if he can get appointed to that committee. I think it would be really key, and I think he's gonna try to do that. I've also talked to Representative Tish Morrow. She's not sure because of her health issues, whether or not she would be able to participate, but she's gonna try if she can. We get two southern Colorado legislators on there. The other person that's really interested in being on the committee, and I think it'd be great if either one was on the committee, is Representative Winter out of Trinidad. He is a champion for Southern Colorado and for Pueblo. And the other is Representative Matthew Martinez. So we'll keep you advised on that. I know we're sort of at the end here in terms of legislature, but that is one you've really got to focus on, because this interim committee will meet six times, and I guarantee you, if we don't kill it and it's really weak, it's gonna come back next year. Second bill is the land use bill. That also has been significantly amended. It certainly takes out most of the provisions that I think were most objectionable to the city in terms of its power and its scope over local authority around land use planning. But it's still not a good precedent-setting bill. This is still one of those areas. And as I've said, you know, there was always sort of this sacred line when I served in legislature is that you didn't, you know, you didn't infringe upon those kinds of powers that are really left, both in the Constitution but in statute to cities and counties and municipalities. So that bill, so the status, so the, I'm trying to give you the latest. The land use bill is up in the First House Committee upon adjournment tomorrow. We don't know if anybody from the city will testify on that. We'll send the link. If anybody has questions after my presentation and you want to testify, let us know on that one. And Ryan, help me on the land use bill. When is that scheduled? I'm looking at my notes. Maybe they're not on. Oh, let me see. I'll get, before I leave, I'll get an idea on the land use bill. So those are the, those are the two. The land use bill will be heard tomorrow as well. So if you need the link for either of those two bills, let me know, and we'll get that sent out to you. If you want to participate and you'd like some information before you testify, please let me know. The last thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, and I know you have some other questions that, last Monday, and I apologize that I had a conflict, but I just wanted to give you just the bare bones of the property tax bill. We were there for the governor's press conference at the Capitol this morning. The things that you maybe, you might be asking, and we'll send you our notes, is that this would reduce the residential assessment rate from 7.15 to 6.7 in 2023 and '24, and the continuing this reduction for primary residences in future years. It also is reducing the taxable value of residents by $40,023 and $24,000, and then it caps the growth in district property tax collections, excluding school districts at inflation, allowing local governments to override the cap after giving notice to property owners. And then it also protects the funding for public education by the state doing a backfill. So the property taxes that our school districts would get, that is not gonna be negated by this bill. And then it also, what I think is really an important one, and I think you may get questions on, is this providing seniors who currently receive the homestead exemption, a larger reduction of $140,000, allowing them to continue to receive this reduction if they move. As I said, I know, you know, county taxes, that's a county responsibility, but I think this is such a significant issue in Pueblo in terms of the populations that we all serve. And I know you may get questions, but that's where we're at. We expect them to, we're working late nights. The utility is up this afternoon, the bill that would attempt to reduce rates for utility payers. That bill is up this evening. We expect them probably, the official date of the session ending is the 8th. We think they may go into the weekend and not come back on Monday, but we'll keep you advised of that. If you have any questions about anything that I presented this evening, let me know. If anyone wants to testify in either the land use bill or the air bill. But again, it was really gratifying to hear from Everas this morning saying, you know, "You guys are the one-two punch. The city's really come in and provided us sort of the credibility of the city and put it onto line to say this would hurt manufacturing in Southern Colorado." So on behalf of Everas and some of the other manufacturers, they wanted to say thank you. So thank you for the time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Romero. Questions from council? Last time, Councilman Flores actually asked a little bit about Senator Henrikson's bill on healthy food access. Can you talk a little bit about that, Mr. Romero? Like what the actual bill says?
Yeah, you know, I know that Ryan had reported out to me on that one. I apologize. I didn't get a chance to look at that. We were fighting so hard on the air bill. I promise you, I will get you a report out on that tomorrow morning and get back to you with the status on that. I did chat with him briefly about it, but I apologize. I know that you'd ask a question. We'll get that answer.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then for, you know, I know that you've been keeping us all apprised about the land use bill. I'm curious if we've actually seen the amendments on that. I know that there were amendments, you know.
We set the amendments, but it's really complicated unless you have sort of a side-by-side view. CML has a sheet that they're using as a fact sheet. We'll send that tomorrow to you. It really sort of, you know, it's not gonna give you, you know, exact detail on the provisions, but it will tell you what's left in the bill, and it also explains why CML is still interested. It's really complicated in the sense that, you know, the pieces that are, that are still, you know, that are still in that bill, you know, it still creates this advisory committee for methodologies for developing statewide regional and local housing needs assessment. That's still in the bill. There's, they watered down the provisions of guidance for creating housing need plans, developing a menu of affordable strategies. Now, these are not shells, they're maize, but they're, but they're still in the bill, and there's still some, you know, unfunded mandates in some of these provisions. It develops a menu of displacement mitigation measures. It identifies strategic growth objectives, and it also develops reporting guidance template. That's, that's the nucleus of what the bill is now. I mean, you know, when you looked at it before, it just absolutely dissolved any power you had in terms of, you know, being able to provide any kind of land use planning at the local level. So I think some of these provisions are actually pretty good because they are maize. I think there, there may be, at some point, we'll talk about that this summer if we get a chance. There may be some opportunities for the city to capture some unexpended federal money to help in some of these programs. So we'll try to keep you advised on that one. There's no guarantee on that, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Some of these, some of these provisions, if they stay and the bill doesn't get killed, there may be some resources available. We're still trying to sort that out.
Okay, thanks, Gil. And then since the property tax, property taxes in general are such a huge, make up such a huge percentage of the county's budget, I'm curious if the county has gone one way or the other in support or opposition for the property tax bill that was mentioned earlier.
Yeah, you mean the one that was, not the one that was introduced today? Or the one that was introduced today?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have not taken a position on the bill, but we've only, we had only seen a draft, and actually, we hadn't really received much information until the governor did the press conference this afternoon on the first floor, and then we got more detail on the bill. We'll be following that one for you, that even though that really is, as I said, not within your purview on the tax side, I just think you're gonna get so many questions from your constituents. I think you need to have some information that you can give them. So we'll get you some talking points on that one.
Great. Other questions from Mr. Romero? Seeing none, thank you so much for hopping on, Gil.
Okay, and I promised to get you the stuff on the health initiatives proposal tomorrow. I just, we're, it is just insanely busy up here in terms of these last seven days. So thank you for your time, counselor.
Of course, yeah. Okay, get some sleep, too, maybe. Okay, thanks, Gil.
Thank you.
Moving right along on our agenda, then, our next presentation is regarding the marijuana excise tax. So can I please have Dr. Hassan to the podium?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak here. If your president, Heather Graham, who is not here, had her away, I shouldn't be here. And I didn't want to be here. I'm not well. I was sick, but I especially came for her. Apparently, in my absence, she said, "I'm pissed off because Hassan is coming to make a presentation. Madam, have you no shame? I'm the biggest benefactor of the city. You will listen to me whenever I choose to speak." And let me just briefly go over some of the things.
Okay, Dr. Hassan. Yeah, if we could keep it to the presentation, if we could keep it to the presentation and the content and not personal.
I'm making this presentation first.
But I'm saying not personal.
I'm introducing myself. Please be quiet and let me, don't eat into my time. You should be here. I am the biggest benefactor of the city. So if the president of the council doesn't have time for me, screw her. I don't care. I have given millions of dollars to set up the Hassan School of Business, an institute of technology, and I was very glad to see Mr. Romero, because he was very helpful to me getting money from the state to build those edifices. And I wanted to say to her, "Madam, do you have no shame?" That the biggest manufacturer in the history of this town. Let me just go through some of the things that I have done. I have given money, $400,000, to the community college. I have given several million dollars to the CSU. I have given $600,000 to the University of Colorado, and the list goes on and on. I paid $400,000 for the outdoor auditorium and $400,000 for the indoor auditorium. And I couldn't find anybody who has been as generous to the city as I have been, and this is only a very small list. And I have been also giving money to the various institutions like NYU, like institutions which need to be supported, who are doing good work. And then to hear is somebody who's a pimple on the nose of the city to say, "Oh, gee, I'm pissed off. Lady, get pissed off more, because I'll make my life mission to make your life pissed off." And, and the thing is, which bothers me, is that nobody in this council, some of whom are so-called my so-called friend, stood up for me in my absence. This is what is called bad, bad friends. I have, I think you have, I have distributed, you have my entire biodata, including my philanthropy. And if you have a question, please feel free to ask. I can't, I can't go through all the list of money I have given all over the place in this state and in this country. And if you want me, I will be happy to do it. I also paid for, oh, this must be the president of the council, the one who said she's pissed off that I'm coming. I'm pissed off that you are here, that you are president of this.
Dr. Hassan, if you could get to your presentation, instead of, and please get to your presentation.
You are not going to tell me anything, madam, because you have no shame. You are an illegitimate president. I don't recognize you as president.
I think we're done with Dr. Hassan.
So please sit there and listen to me.
We're done with Dr. Hassan tonight. Thank you, sir. I think we're done with him. Have a good night.
Oh, the work session chair can direct.
How dare you, madam? You have no shame.
Okay.
You say you are pissed off.
Okay.
Because I'm going to come to the presentation.
Dr. Hassan, I'm speaking as the work session chair, not President Graham. I'm the work session chair, which presides over the work sessions. You have used 10 minutes of your time, and I will give you...
I could have as much time as I want. I have bought that time for the city. And find somebody else who has a benefit.
And as we, please, also, for those in our chambers, please be respectful of this meeting.
I have brought lustre to the city. I've given money to the city. You see all this? These are the commissions on which I have set. National commissions, Commission for Healthcare Reform, Commission for Afghanistan, which have set up. All these were ordered by the president and the Congress combined. There is nobody in the city who can say this. There are three presidents of the United States who loved to talk to me when they were president, and now, after they are not, one of them is out, that I'm sorry to say. But none of them said, "I'm pissed off that he wants to come and talk to me." They were always very welcoming. And, you know, you don't recognize, you want to bite the hand which feeds you? I'm the largest, biggest taxpayer of the city. I pay over $500,000 a year, which nobody else pays. And, and you had the gall, lady, to say it. As I said, you are a pimple on the face of the city. You have dinky, two dinky restaurants on the basis of which you are jumping up and down and want to confront me. Before you confront me, do something worthwhile, something that can be proud of.
So you're in, you're in front of us, Dr. Hassan, right now. You have our attention for eight minutes and 34 seconds.
No, you will give me whatever time I need.
We scheduled you for 15 minutes. What, now that...
I will, I will, I have earned the right. God damn it, how much one has to do for the city to earn the right to talk to the council?
Right. So what do you want to talk to us about, Dr. Hassan?
What?
What do you want to talk to us?
I didn't agree to the 15 minutes. That's your limit. You will relax that limit, and I will sit here as long as I want to.
If, if you're done, you have 15 minutes. The work chair controls this.
No, but I didn't.
In a second. And so if you don't, if you don't complete, you can sit and remain, but then your time will be up in the work session chair, unless the chair or the committee or the council wants to extend the time.
No, I don't know who you are, sir.
So you can present, but you might want to get to the point.
I am shaking all over my body.
Talk about the excise tax, Dr. Hassan, and the problem you've got.
I told you, I'm not going to tell these income pools what is in their own interests. If you want me to tell them, I'll tell them.
I want you to tell them what issue you have with the excise tax and why you think an adjustment would make sense.
It's not my issue. It is the city's issue. Your taxes from marijuana have gone down. And one of the reasons is that I have closed down my grow. I have 62 employees that I've laid off because I couldn't grow, because I can buy from the outside for 150 to $200 a pound. I can't grow it at that price. And one of the major reasons I can't grow it at that price is the excise tax, both at the state level and the local level. Pueblo is the only city which has 8%. Denver has zero. Denver has zero. Aurora has zero. And so zero of zero is still zero. If nobody is growing, I'm not paying any because I'm not growing any. And the second thing is, what happened is, what I was going to suggest was that you should remove the excise tax, encourage the other growers, not just me, to come and grow here. There are certain advantages in growing in Pablo. You have water, you have sun. And you can attract them. And that they will bring employment there. Right now, there is no employment in that industry. Because at at least on the grow part. The other thing is, this will increase your taxes revenue. How? Because I can't, when I buy at two hundred dollars, I can sell it at four hundred dollars. The sales tax you are collecting through the county is on four hundred dollars. If I had the ability to sell it for six hundred dollars, which I can do it if there was no excise tax, then you will be collecting a sales tax on six hundred dollars, not four hundred dollars. Very simple arithmetic. But who is listening? Nobody wants to do the now. Yes, sir.
I'm listening.
Okay. Is anybody else listening? Okay. The thing is, you have to be smart. You have to look at the things. You know, don't be like the proverbial golden eggs in one day. I'm going to kill the hand which lays the golden egg. So I can get all the gold, golden eggs. There are no golden eggs. It's only with that period of time and the labor of the people who are laboring on it that you will also get your share. I can easily, if I grow high quality marijuana and be able to, my cost of production is five hundred dollars. Before that, it was four hundred dollars when you add up all the taxes stayed and it becomes seven hundred dollars. Seven hundred dollars means you had to sell at a minimum thousand to twelve hundred dollars. That's not going to happen under this environment. And one of the things is, if you go on the website, on the look at YouTube. What is happening? You may not be aware of it, but YouTube is full of information that China is buying land here in Colorado. And and in California. And they are growing. And they are subsidizing this so that they can push out the local farmers. I have talked to Jared, Jared Polis. He said he will have an investigation. But the best thing is to counter them in the marketplace, see how long can China keep it up? Subsidizing those people that they have their proxies. And so you have, you you are getting, I think if I'm not mistaken, about three hundred thousand dollars per month from the sales tax and from the excise tax. I'm not talking about the state. I'm just talking about the city and county. It's gone. A greatly diminished. And I I am suggesting that you can restore part of it. It will never be the same as it was before. But zero of zero is still zero. If you, you can put it at twenty percent excise tax. But if nobody is growing and nobody is paying, you will still get zero. So I'm showing a way that you will start getting some excise tax. Maybe not as much as you are getting before, but at least better than what you are getting now. And also that your sales tax will go up as a sales tax revenue. Because people will buy, my own market research is that people will buy if we sell it at six, seven hundred dollars a pound in the in the retail stores. They wouldn't buy it fifteen hundred or twelve hundred that we were charging before. So it's up to you. If you don't reduce the excise tax, I'm fine buying it at two hundred dollars where I don't even have to pay excise tax and sell it at four hundred dollars. I'm here to tell you that there is a better way. And also the sixty two people that I had to lay off, it hurts me. This is the first time in my life that I laid off my employees. And they were good employees. They didn't deserve to be laid off. If I had the dressers, if I had the slightest move, place to move, I would have kept them. I kept them longer than anybody else. Subsidizing it from my own pocket, but at at that time, I came to the conclusion that I can't continue like this forever. So it's up to you. I'm not going to beg. I'm not going to ask. I'm not going to piss off that lady who ran out, can't face me. And because she knows what she has done. And I'll make my, one of my, out of many of my missions, that she doesn't come to this council again. Valid. And if she bothers me more, if she says something more nasty, I'll have a recall. We have a legal recall. I have the bill and I have the resources to do what I want to do. So that's all what I had to say. Unless, if you have any question, please feel free to ask.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hassan, for.
Don't be, don't be so much in a hurry to get rid of me. Others may have.
I know. I'm I'm just about, Dr. Hassan, I'm just about to ask my fellow counselors if there are any questions for you. Are there any questions for Dr. Hassan? Counselor Flores.
Yeah, I I'm interested in the amount of money that we really are getting, and I don't think we have anybody.
Will you speak louder? I I'm not well today, so I'm not on my best.
No, I, this question is really more to our city staff. And I think the council would be interested in finding out what revenue we are receiving in the.
I can tell you about like five or ten thousand instead of quarter of a million.
You mentioned three hundred thousand.
I, five and ten thousand is because I'm keeping protein that once China get tired and we can go back to more normal times, I, you need a protein to start the process. You can't. It's very difficult. It's very hard to start. And the second thing I wanted to say was that I have applied two years ago to the DEA for a license to grow. And also license for license for research. I'm the only facility in this country, or probably in the world, who can grow pharmaceutical grade marijuana. Once that is happened and we start doing the research, all these pharmaceutical companies will come in. There are five hundred forty, fifty four. I'm sorry, five hundred forty five biologically active molecule, and from observation, they are effective in eighty three conditions. But the problem is, we don't know which molecule is effective in PTSD, which molecule is effective in pain, which molecule is effective in in PTSD. So we, that that is the research, which is a hundred year, fifty to hundred year research. But you had to fractionate, separate the molecules, which I have succeeded in separating it in my lab. So if DA gives you a permission, I intend to do it for the pain so that we have this opioid crisis, a solution for the opioid crisis and for the PTSD, which people, our veterans are committing suicide. Those are my two priorities to begin with, and I'll get it grant from the federal government for those two things.
Thank you.
And it will take a lot of money and a lot of time to do the research. And but it would be worthwhile, and it will add thousands of jobs to the city. Thousands of high paying job in terms of PhDs coming in, lab technicians coming in and working on it.
Thank you for that. I I guess my question would be, do you, Solano, and that's, could you get us the, I think it'd be very beneficial to us, what amount we're really talking about?
Our city finance director.
City Finance Director is in the meeting this evening, and she will give you here in a minute what is sitting in budget, but she'll confirm it electronically tomorrow.
All right.
But Alex, well, Alex is visiting with the mayor right now, but we'll send it all electronically to you.
We just need some more information.
Does anybody else have any question of me?
Counselor, Counselor Atencio does.
Yeah, I don't know that I have a question for you, Dr. Hassan, but I think staff, we really should look at the fee structure as if we're taxing an industry that no longer exists, which is zero. Then we're taxing an industry out of operation. So and there's no doubt that the industry has changed. From the time that it began to now, it has changed completely. So it's probably a good idea to look. So I'm, I'm not opposed to to looking at the fee structure and looking to see.
What I forgot to tell you was, I built a house, which is, I spent fifty two million dollars. It's a Robert Adams house, which is unique, iconic plastic in the entire world. And Jared went to Hurst Castle and he said, oh, your house is far more beautiful than that. Please, please donate it to the city, to the state. So I'm in the process of trying to donate it because he wants to make Hassan part, but I want to have conditions that state will spend money to welcome the out of town tourists and to put this city on a, on the map or something which is not in any other city in any other country. And so I, the other thing I was going to say is, I know the president is getting. Brendan, would you come here, please? I'm always watching out for the city in every manner that you have no idea that we distributed. I got four fellowship, presidential fellowship for the CSU Pablo. Now, the importance of that is, it may be two each year up till now. But when they go there, all the other fellows who all come from the Ivy, there is nobody they will take other than the Ivy. They have a networking that they can do with the, with the other with the other fellows who are there. And these fellows are then automatically have a inside track to go into the State Department, go to the Defense Department, go to the Department of and Treasury Department, all the important departments they will go. And the thing is, my expectation was that if I get enough number of fellows from Pablo, they'll keep Pablo in their mind when when some, some important thing comes up. But right now, we have no visibility at the federal level. This one gesture would have given a vast visibility to our city and our place. Cities don't build by themselves. People have to build them, had to promote them. And there has to be something on the basis of which it can promote a unique building in the city. Why do you think that Colorado is being prospered so much versus Pablo? It was because of Broadmoor. Broadmoor was a beautiful place that built. My house is far more than anything in Broadmoor. And is the legacy of Robert Adams, the father of the new classical architecture. It will be Broadmoor any. And that is why Jared wants to take it, and I'm willing to give it, give the, donate the building. But before I donate it, I want to say, give me a program by which you will promote Pablo and this house.
Are there any other?
Going to just take it over to you.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Hassan? Um, you know, Dr. Hassan, I I don't think anyone up here is saying that you haven't done good for our community. I think that we all recognize.
Why is your president saying that I'm pissed off?
No, I have, I have.
Talk to the.
If you want to talk to President Graham, then you can talk to her. I will not tolerate disrespect in these chambers, though. So when you come back to council in the future, when you come back to council, I would appreciate you not lobbying personal attacks at the people on this, on this diet.
What was she doing?
No, no one is saying that you did not have done anything bad for this community, and we appreciate your investment in Pueblo. But when you come back to these chambers, I expect respect, Dr. Hassan, and I, and I can guarantee it, it will go both ways.
Publicly. I will come and point the finger at her that she is a pimple on the face.
Doctor Hassan, no, okay. See that it, I I can't tolerate that disrespect.
No, but.
So I'm going to move on.
Let me ask you a question. Why are you defending the indefensible?
I am going to move on. And when you come back in the future, you're going to be respectful. So now we're going to move, we're going to take a brief five minute recess before moving on to our next agenda item. Our next agenda item will be the Comanche three update from Ms. Ashley Valdez, but we're going to take a brief five minute recess. Thank you. But we're going to take a, a brief five-minute recess. Thank you.
Um, short, we call it PISAIC. I know that's kind of a weird little acronym for you, but it's an easy way to to look at it. We have several members and I'm happy to say our co-chair Corinne Gaylor is here with me this evening. And she is committee, the committee co-chair along with Francis Consilia, with Consilia Energy Law and Policy. In addition to the advisory committee that we have, we have Jerry Bella with IBEW, Sarah Blackhurst, Action 22 Executive Director, Russell DeSalvo with Pueblo Plex. We feel like Pueblo Plex might be another opportunity for a generation there. And then Dr. Patty Erjavec with Pueblo Community College, and Dr. Tim Motte as we look at how do we educate this next workforce and what are those going to be? So I think there's going to be some opportunities to work alongside them and also in conjunction with the Pueblo Just Transition Committee Director on those opportunities as well. And then along with that, retired Judge Dennis Mees, Dwayne Nava, Greater Pueblo Chamber of Commerce, Jeff Shaw with Pueblo Economic Development Corporation, and former County Commissioner Chris Weisman. So that makes up our committee for the PISAIC Committee. Next slide. So as you look at this next slide, it is the timeline and our committee is not going to be one of those committees that goes on and on and on. We have a very finite time to get the work done. We have been tasked with getting this study complete and put forward to Excel Energy by December of this year. We will use this study as we go forward. I believe you all know that in 2024, June of 24, we will be presenting an electric resource plan that is Pueblo-specific, specifically for this community as to what those generation resources would be. And so this committee will do its work to come alongside and inform those decisions of what we've looked at in that process. And again, the final report will be presented in December of 2023. Next slide. So as I mentioned, when we look at this criteria, there are going to be numerous criterias that we look at. We are talking about solar, we're talking about wind energy, we are looking at solar storage, we are looking at carbon capture. There's a numerous technologies that are coming online. We have some that are already here in the community that have been positively impactful. And so as we look at each one of those and we look at the matrix for it, we're going to be judging it based on the community impact and I won't read through all of those there, but you can see them. Dispatchability, that is very important to us because as you all know, the wind doesn't blow all the time, the sun doesn't always shine. And so when we have those heat days in July, when everyone's turning on their air conditioning, we need to look at what that's going to be that we can dispatch right away. So that is a key component too. Carbon intensity. How sustainable is the technology? Emissions during operation? And then carbon emissions during construction? Those are very key for us as we step forward with our plans. We also have the schedule. We're looking at resource that we can have online by 2030 to make up those gaps that we'll have with Comanche III. And then the environmental impact. Very important to us. We are part of the Colorado Clean Energy Future. So we do have to take that into account as we move forward. We have to look at how much land is required. Excel Energy, I believe at Comanche, I think it's four four hundred and seventy-some acres, I believe. I'll check on that for you. So we have to look at the environmental impacts for land. What kind of environmental concerns would arise? And then also, as we look at hazards, would there be anything? So we want to be aware of that. And that'll be a matrix that we look at. Then finally, levelize cost of energy. How profitable is the project going to be? Are there newer technologies that come online that we'll be able to take advantage of? So those are just some of the the key criterias that we're looking at across the study as we go forward. And then finally, because we want the public to be abreast of what this committee is doing, we are meeting once a month. We started in February. We will go February through August, meeting once a month, and then beginning in September, August, September, we're going to meet twice a month because the heavy work will be done then as we start trying to look at writing the report and gathering all the data that we're going to be looking at over the next several months. So as we do these, these meetings are recorded. And then we also have a website and an email and phone. And so what we would like the public to do, we make those meetings available to the public. They can view those, they can write in questions, they can call. And we do have a dedicated person that's looking at those and answering them in a timely fashion. And then again, as I mentioned, we will have a third party come in and do some engagement and and community outreach as well, in addition to the website that we'll have up that people can look at at their leisure. So that covers my presentation for the night. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Valdez. What questions are there from Council? Uh, Counselor Flores.
You know, the more you think about future energy. Can you hear me?
Can you speak up? No.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that when you look at what's going on, you know, worldwide, having to do with technology and the different alternatives to fossil fuels, it seems to revolve around two things, the manufacturing of batteries and also the lack of minerals that go into making these batteries that we don't have here in the United States. And I'm wondering, is Excel Energy at all involved in in those two areas?
I would have to check on that and get back with you. We do have a group that works with many technologies across the board because the energy space, I started in 1996. And at that time, all anybody wanted to know was, can I turn on my lights? Can I use my air conditioner and does my heater work? That was pretty much it. And it has evolved greatly over that time. So the technology is fast-moving. I can certainly look into that to see what we're doing, but we do have a whole group that is involved in that innovative space and working with it. One of the gentlemen that we work with is involved in that and he comes down every month for the meetings and is really running that technical piece of it as we work with our consultant on that. So I'd be happy to get you some more information.
And in the future, because you have almost 700 acres out there, I think it's close to that 695, 696. There is, that's a big piece of ground out there. I'm assuming that if a NID had come up where maybe half of that could be utilized for a specific project, that that could be done rather quickly. Because you you still have, you'll still have a couple of plants up there, but there's still with taking down, you know, the first plant, the first plant that you did, I'm assuming that there is a large swath of land that could be considered immediately.
There, there is a lot of acreage out there. And in addition to that, Pueblo Plex is uniquely structured in that it is close to our Colorado Power Pathway, which is a transmission line that we're building and pending Pueblo County approval, of course. But it is uniquely situated right there and it's real important that wherever these assets are, they're close to where we have a transmission that can connect into our grid. So that's another promising piece.
My last question has to do with the environmental issue. I'm assuming that when you ultimately, all of that land after 2031, that Excel will leave the ground pristine, I guess, whatever, whatever it takes to get rid of the environmental issues, either in the plant materials or in the ground would be dealt with. So for our community, that's a big deal. We don't have to then deal with that on top of everything else. Am I right in that?
Yes, we are always concerned about the environment. So that's one of those criterias that we are looking across as we, as we go with it. I don't know the exact decommissioning plans, but as we work with our communities across the board on that, that's something we are keenly aware of and responsible, trustworthy, committed and connected in our communities.
Thank you.
And safe.
Counselor Tenzio.
Yeah, thank you for being here tonight. You may know that the Mayor's Commission on Electricity Needs for the City of Pueblo, it meets monthly also. They have an ask. When they saw that this committee was being formed, they were wondering if somebody from that committee could join your group. Would that be possible?
Well, the community, the committee is already chartered and moving forward. And given that our timelines are so short, the amount of material that we have already covered is immense. So it wouldn't be practical. But again, I do direct the public to our website, and that is there within your material so that they can look. And again, we're happy to meet with anyone and answer questions that they have as well.
Okay, if they do have any questions, I'll make sure that we get some questions and answers from you.
Please do.
To that effect. And then I'll direct them to your website and everything else. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And is PISAIC working at all with the Just Transition Coordinator? Can you tell us a little bit about that partnership?
So that's a little bit confusing for some, and I can certainly understand why. Our committee, the PISAIC Committee was put together due to the settlement and that was through the PUC. So that is separate from House Bill 191314 that was brought about. That is the just transition piece of it. So those are two separate pieces. That being said, the way I look at the position that the city has is it's a little bit broader than what we're doing. Our work is very limited, will be done at December with this work. The Ms. Escar's position with the City of Pueblo has a little bit of a broader view because there are grant opportunities that could be interfaced with as we're looking at how do we educate the workforce that's going to come on. There's also opportunities to look at, say legislative policies and things like that that might have impacts on our communities. So it's broader and it is in a longer term than what our committee will be doing. But again, we will be able to provide Ms. Escar with all the information that she would need as she works on her side of the, I guess, is my, one of my colleagues says her swim lane. So she'll be good.
Yeah, no, that helps clarify. Other questions? No, saying none. Thank you so much, Ms. Valdez, for that presentation, for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Moving right along on our agenda is the Page Union Employee Essential Pay. So Ms. Aragon to the podium, Ms. Pacheco and Ms. Solano.
Madam Chair, members of council, thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak to you tonight. I'm going to do the bulk of the city side of the presentation, then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Aragon to make a statement on behalf of her membership, which would be obviously directly impacted by this proposal. So we're bringing this to you because there's a resolution on your agenda for the next council meeting on May 8. Do I need to be advancing this? Sorry. Okay, so there's a resolution on your agenda for the next council meeting. And so we wanted to come and preview what it's asking for and why we're here tonight. So ARPA or the American Rescue Plan Act does allow for essential worker premium pay to be paid for certain employees who worked during the public health emergency. So council should be somewhat familiar with this because you've granted this to another group of employees. So back in September of 2021, you passed a resolution which provided essential worker premium pay for eligible city police and fire personnel in the bargaining units for those two groups. So you, you approved about a little over a million dollars was designated for this purpose. And those eligible employees were paid $1.50 an hour for each hour worked between April 1st, 2020 and March 31st, 2021. At that time, Page or our General Services Group was not considered as part of that proposal. And so what we're trying to do is, is address that now, somewhat later than the first group, but very similar process and application of this allowance under ARPA. So the resolution is for quite a bit less money than what police and fire received. But basically, it would provide a flat amount to employees of $1,014.50. So $1,014.50 one time to eligible general service employees. And that, that amount is $1,000 plus the 1.45% Medicare costs that that employee would have to pay. So we've just rounded that up to the $1,014.50. Essentially, what that means is they'd be getting paid 48 cents an hour for those hours between April 1st, 2020 and March 31st, 2021. So same timeframe as the police review just now applied to our general service employees. In terms of eligibility, we had a pretty simple process. Eligibility was determined by the department director that was responsible for the employee wherever they were working at that time, back in 2020 and 2021. As you can imagine, we have employees that work around, work and move and get promoted and change departments and things. So we went back to those department heads and said, can you verify that this person meets the criteria? And the criteria was really they had to be actively employed during that time, that they had to spend the majority of their working hours onsite in public-facing capacities. So we did have a number of employees that teleworked. They would not be eligible for this under the ARPA guidelines. So it's just for those public-facing positions or positions like our 911 dispatchers who weren't public-facing but were regularly interfacing with our first responders who were public-facing. So that, that qualifies. And then the third criteria is that the employee would have to be still actively employed as a general service employee if council passes the resolution. So on May 8, they would have to be in that, in that capacity. So that's the eligibility. Mayor Gradisar and and Page, you know, worked very collaboratively, collaboratively on this resolution. We, we worked really hard, passed a spreadsheet back probably 50,000 times between the two of us, but we finally have determined that 167 Page bargaining unit employees meet the eligibility criteria. So that's about 61% of the bargaining unit. And the total anticipated cost is $171,843. So again, that's 167 employees, 1,014 each. So that's how we arrive at that. So with that, that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, but would like to wait on that until BJ's had an opportunity to make her statement.
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, Madam President, Council members and Mayor Gradisar. On behalf of Page and the general service employees, I would like to urge you to support this essential work premium pay for our employees. As Marissa indicated, fire and police received their essential pay back in September of 2021. We have worked with the city since that day to try and come up with a solution. Even though their payout was significantly higher than what was proposed, that is proposed for our general service, we're asking for the essential pay for those that meet the criteria. We may not carry a gun or save lives, but in, in, in reality, we do in other ways. But without the general service employees, the city would not run. General service employees often feel like they're the forgotten stepchildren of the City of Pueblo and we rarely become, and we rarely come before you to ask for anything. We agree that 85%, this is kind of going off the subject since we have your attention. We agree that the 85% of the comparable 70, comparable seven cities need to be raised. That was brought to you guys last week. We have tried in the past for several years to get this raise, this figure raised. Currently, Page has 58 vacancies in the workforce. This has caused many of our services for the City of, City of Pueblo citizens to be delayed, sometimes indefinitely. How can we expect to keep employees working for us who are only paying 85% of the pay of the comparable cities? We, the three unions in the city, need to sit down and come up with a plan on how to proceed to accomplish raising the 85% instead of rushing into and making a quick decision that in the long term can and will affect everyone who works for the City of Pueblo. Not only in pay, but mostly important in the morality, in the morality of the employees and the city as a whole. In March, you approved the raise for Page for, for 2024 in the amount of 5.3%, which was 85% of the COLA of our comparable cities, according to the provision of our contract. While we appreciate this raise, we do not want to be left behind if you vote to raise the percentage of the comparables for the other employees of the city. Or if you vote to give a bigger raise than the COLA figure to the other unions. We, Page, your general service employees, want to thank you both, city administration, for working with us to get this essential pay resolved and for you, counsel, for your time and effort. And we ask for your support in both these issues that would be being, be brought forward to you in the near future. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Aragon and Ms. Pacheco. What questions are there from Council? Counselor Grant.
Thank you, BJ. Can you explain to us why your essential pay is so much less than police and fire received?
When, believe me, we went back and forth and back and forth. When fire, when we approached the mayor years, 2021, remember it was he was not going to support us at all. And through the, through us working with him and stuff like that, he realized that we, he always said we were essential. He just felt that it didn't meet, we did not meet the essential pay criteria. So once we worked that out and he realized and we were able to do that, when we went back to do the per hour, a lot of people, a lot of supervisors said it wasn't kept in the same faction, fashion as, the timekeeper wasn't kept in the same fashion as fire and police. We went back and forth and figures, back and forth and figures. We finally came up with $1,000 and I put it to the vote of my, my general service employees. They weren't happy with it at first. We're hoping that by us agreeing to this, that we keep our working relationship with administration because we have gotten such a good working relationship with them through this whole process. Plus hopefully that we could build on it and it will help us promote and get better raises in the future or work with you guys, like if you are raising fire and police, that you don't forget us. Our people here, you know, work hard for the city and they make the city run.
Is the $1,000 comparable to what police and fire received in the long run or are we way off?
Way off. Way, way off. It's, it's
Okay, well, I can give you some numbers if you'd like.
Can you provide us with some numbers?
Police and fire obviously was handled $1.50 per hour and it wasn't just, you know, straight hours. It was that they worked overtime hours too. So it was $1.50 for every hour. So just to give you an idea, the average for a police patrol officer, corporal was about 2,700, police sergeant 2,800. And then fire had anywhere from, depending on rank, from 2,600 up to over 4,000. So it just depended on how many hours they worked.
What do, what do we need to do to make those, make that more comparable to, I mean, $1,000 to almost 2,700?
Well,
that's not good.
It's, it is good and it is comparable. Well, let me tell you how. You recall the COVID hit in 2020. And at the time COVID hit, we had already approved the agreement with Page. So Page got the, got the pay raise that they were entitled to for the, for the succeeding year because of the uncertainties. So we agreed to give Page an increase for 2021, as I recall. And as the contract required, we extended that with respect to the police and the fire because of the uncertainties. Because I had council members at that time saying we needed to cut the workforce by 25%, cut the pay by 25%. We went to the police and fire unions because we hadn't started negotiating with them yet. And we said to them, hey, if you have these uncertainties, we would appreciate it if instead of the getting the pay raise next year, you forego that and just agree to take a zero pay increase for that next year. That's what they did. That's what they did. So as a result of that, when it became apparent that we could use some ARPA money for essential pay, we wanted to try to get police and fire back to where they were and where Page already was because they got the raise that was agreed upon and they didn't wait a year to get it like police and fire did. So that's why we think it's comparable. That's why it's taken us a little bit longer to come to this agreement with Page because they didn't forego that raise that police and fire did when COVID hit.
Is, is that raise comparable to $1,400 or of a year?
No, no.
Comparable to what?
Like 1,400, 1,500, 1,600 dollars a year?
That year, we got a 3.25% raise. It was, it depend on the job.
Just, just average is that?
I wouldn't even be able to guess. We were not approached when, when COVID hit because you, council already had passed the, our raise for that year. The mayor did not come to us and say, hey, would you forego it? So instead, we went ahead with it. We, I didn't know about it to way into the year that he had went to fire and police and asked them to forego the, the, their raise. So they did go the next year without the raise where we got the 3.2% raise. But our raises are very small compared to when you compare them to fire and police. Because 3.2 on maybe, let's say, on a maintenance worker, they, they average what, 2,900 a month? So 3.2 of that would be maybe $60 a month or something like that times 12. So it's, yeah, so it just depends.
That's really nowhere near.
No.
Yeah, I, I guess similarly, I, I think the $1,000 is a bit random when I, and especially when you're comparing it to PD and Fire, which we've already seen. So I have the same question. It just seems off.
It seems too low. I'd, I'd like to see that at the same at place and fire.
They've agreed to it. Page has agreed to it.
Well, can we take a step back?
Well, sure, you can give more than they've agreed to. If that's, that's fiscally irresponsible in my judgment.
Well, it's, it's ARPA funds and so it's what the money was supposed to be used for and leaving one of the three unions is not responsible either. And so I think that we have to get them up to par with the other two unions. If we're going to be giving essential pay like that, we should make it essential and fair for everybody involved.
Martina, or Counselor Martina, or take it, you had something?
I was going to say, thank you both for putting those numbers together and coming to an agreement with your union. I think the $1,000 bonus for the essential workers during that time is fair and looking at a 5.3 raise, when? In what timeframe?
Starting 2024.
That we could look at that. I think that's, Aaron, thank you. I mean, you have my support for the $1,000 bonus.
Counselor Flores?
Yeah, when the calculations were put together, how many months did you, you brought it up on one of the slides, but I couldn't tell. It was between 2020 and 2020.
Yeah, it was between April 1st, 2020 to March 31st, 2021, same exact review period that police and fire had.
How many months were that, was that?
A year, just a year.
Was that, okay, because I thought maybe it should have been prorated if it was more than 12 months.
It was just that it was same exact review time as we used on the police and fire.
And if you, did anybody do the calculations of, of the raise? And then the percentage of, I think you, you said it was anywhere between 27, 26 to 2,800, say 2,700 would be the average for the fire department and for the police department. Did anybody compare a monthly wage to the monthly wage of a police officer? And then factored whether or not it's comparable? Taking into consideration the raise they got? You, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I don't know that anybody did that specific analysis, but it could be, I mean, that could be done.
Well, anyway, I mean, if in fact, this is the agreement that was made. And then, you know, but certainly, you know, we could take a look at the other as we go into negotiations for the next year.
Well, we, we're done with the negotiation. We will not come back to the table to 2025. Well, we, we're done with the negotiation. We'll not come back to the table till two thousand twenty-five. We're in a three-year contract right now. I know this is scheduled from May eighth to be on the, on the ballot to vote. If you guys want me to work with the city to come up with a more detailed comparison, I'm sure Marissa will work with me. Our difference is, is that we won't be able to do per hour, right? But we could, we could actually compare what each person got, what raise.
We could, I mean, we can certainly do a dollar fifty per hour for every page employee during that time. Our payroll system will tell us how many hours they worked. That's how we were able to get it with police and fire. So that, that's extractable from the system.
I will say that your membership behind you is pretty unified.
Yes, they are. It was very heated union meeting last, last week when we met. But if you want, we could come up with these figures and maybe, I know it's scheduled for May eighth, and I know they were told that if this was passed on May, May fifteenth is when we were promised. Maybe we could delay that and bring it back to you at a later date with the figures that you guys are asking for, and then we could decide that way.
BJ, can you talk a little bit about all of the positions that are classified within page? Because, you know, when you, police union, it's pretty self-explanatory. Fire union is pretty self-explanatory. Can you talk a little bit about all of the positions that are in page?
Any position that is in page is not a sworn officer. So your fire and police are sworn officers. So we go from the airport to parks, to stormwater, to wastewater, to housing, public works, PD, every department, anybody who is not a sworn officer is under general service.
Who all still reported to work during the pandemic?
Yes, yes. We were still considered essential personnel. Some departments, like I said, worked from home, very few. The rest of us were still face-to-face. Public Works Office never closed. One day, we were actually, the doors, we kept the door closed, locked, but they had to just knock so that way we could make sure they had masks on, and they came in. So I mean, that's how most of the departments worked.
Counselor Maestri?
I'm I'm not saying that you guys aren't underpaid. But what's happening here is between the police union and now you, and I think I've got, we got a letter from the fire union. We took eighteen million dollars out of the budget just to pay the bills this year. Okay, out of the savings account. So that means we created a budget and we didn't have all the funds to cover it. Didn't we take about eighteen million out of the savings account? How much? We didn't have, we, we didn't we, we took money out of we didn't have enough money to cover it, did we?
I think, I believe Counselor Maestri is talking about the fund balance that the city had to dip into, in its original budget, to make a balanced budget.
Correct. To make our budget balance, we had to take the money out. And so how are we? What are we gonna do if we don't, we don't have money coming in? This is all proposed money. They set these, about these budgets based off of what we, we may supposedly get. We just lost the marijuana tax. We know that we've lost a lot in the excise marijuana tax. Tons of money on that, but hey, the only way to recoup it is to bring more marijuana to town. So that's the other way. This is, I'm just saying that these discussions here are out of out of negotiations. They're out of negotiations for increasing, increasing wages.
We're not increasing wages. What we were asking for is essential pay. I mean,
Well, no, I, I understand.
Fire and police, and only thing we're saying is that if you guys decide to go outside the negotiation that normally is done.
That's, and that's what, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the essential pay. Then we're going to the next level.
Right, and we would, we would never think of coming to the table to, I mean, coming to you and asking for you to raise our raise because we've always done what our negotiation, when, when negotiations are, that's when we usually come to the city.
Yeah.
We usually don't come outside. But now you're entertaining emotions for both fire and police, and our guys just say we cannot be left behind.
I, and I, I completely get that, BJ.
But otherwise, we would not.
Now, we're looking at paying across, pay raises across the boards outside of negotiations. That's what I'm talking about. And so that can't just be held by May eighth in one little session of approving that pay raise. We haven't even looked at, we're, in order to spend money, we have to figure out what we're gonna cut out of the budget in the future in order to raise for everyone. And I'm not saying you don't deserve it. I'm just saying this whole, from one council session to the next, raising, like if we raise the police, you're right. We have to look straight across the board. Can we afford to do it? So I don't even know when it comes across, I didn't ask the police to come and speak, only President Graham did. And so we're looking at all the unions. I agree with you one hundred percent. You should all be upset. If you're looking at one, you should look at all. But the thing is, is we can't resolve, I don't think we should resolve that in, from one session to the next. That's all I'm saying, is that we have to take the time to figure out, are we, is this gonna be sustainable? Because guess what, if it's not sustainable, we lay people off. That's what happens.
I agree with you. I agree with you totally, but amazed, I was told that just the essential pay person was gonna be done for, for Paige. I know at the last meeting, you guys were gonna talk about the other stuff, and that's the only reason why we brought that up. Otherwise, we wouldn't, you know.
I get it, but, and so, and that's what I said. That was my concern when they brought up the additional pay with the police outside of negotiations. You know, because you can't, you gotta make it fair straight across the board. Can we afford it? And I don't know that we can go from one session to the next, seeing if we can afford it. So we just need more time, that's all, to, to have, to have it to look at this, because I, I just don't agree with us just going and approving this. And this is not the chain of command. Council approves what's negotiated by the attorneys and human resources, and this isn't the chain of command. And you guys are jumping the chain of command, and we're a union town. Don't set precedence for all the unions to start jumping out of collective, you know, out of negotiations to do this.
I am, I, I just want to quickly clarify that this is just one-time payment.
Well, I, I get the essential workers, but she went into further. She went into a further discussion outside of.
The resolution, the resolution on May eighth is just going to be the one-time pay, but.
We're prepared to move forward with that unless council wants to pay more than what Paige has agreed to.
Counselor Tensio?
Yeah, I, on the record, I've been calling for parity for all of our employees, all three unions for months now. But that's another issue altogether as compared to this. Now, the, I assume that the formula you use to get the dollar fifty for the fire and police is the same formula that you're using for Paige.
No, it's, it's a different dollar amount. So this, the, Paige's is about forty-eight cents an hour. Theirs was a dollar.
I understand that, but the formula you use to come up with the fifty.
Different. So instead of, so that dollar fifty for police and fire was a per-hour calculation. For Paige, it's just a flat thousand dollars regardless of how many hours were worked in that period. So it's just a thousand dollars, as long as the majority of those hours were at the other criteria, public front facing. So, yeah, different.
Okay.
Yeah, different.
I, I assume that the forty-eight was based on a formula.
No, I'm just, I was just included forty-eight cents so that you could see the difference there.
The math is fairly simple. Forty-eight cents versus a dollar fifty, that's three times as much than, than what it got, so.
There's no counselor to the number of hours each page employee worked.
True.
Each page employee who's eligible is gonna get the flat rate.
I, I had assumed that the formula was the same for all three.
Yeah, some, yeah. I'm just going by memory now, but I think some police officers, maybe some firefighters got a thousand dollars in essential pay, depending on how many hours they worked, maybe seventeen hundred.
They were all different.
They were all different. They were all over the place.
Right, so you had, just as an example to, to support what the mayor is saying, we had a police patrol officer that actually got sixty-nine dollars because they only worked a, a few hours during that timeframe, whereas you know, the high on that was twenty-six hundred. We had the lowest, you know, same thing in fire. You had low numbers for a few hours versus those who worked a lot of hours, obviously got the higher amounts.
The only, the only issue I have is that you agreed to the thousand dollars. I, I wish you had not agreed to it, and you would have agreed to three thousand dollars. You know, my point is.
We started, I mean, we, this has been two years in, in negotiations. We, I mean, back and forth, back and forth, because at one point, we were not getting anything. And I mean, and at our last union meeting, it was a big discussion, you know, why are we getting so much less? I mean, and a lot of people said, you know, we finally got something versus nothing. I mean, they want it more, we want more, I mean, but at that time we were not gonna get more. So that's why they voted on the thousand dollars. I mean, they were hoping for more. And like I say, if you want us to come up with the figures, I could work with Marissa for us to get the figures to you, and then we could delay that resolution from May eighth to maybe the end of, I mean, the end of May.
You don't have the number of hours.
No, because she's gonna have to be able to pull it from, we're gonna do it to do it. So I mean, I, if you want that information, what I would suggest is that why don't we move this from May eighth, pull from May eighth, duck and move it two weeks further, just to give us time to get, get, get it on, on the agenda the right way? And that way, we could come back and give you a bigger.
Yeah, because the way I see it, they still had to make contact with the public.
Yes, yes.
Whether it was police, fire, or general workers, they still had to make contact with, with the public. You know, i- if I were doing it per page the way I'd said it was done by the police and fire per hour, the formula, the difference is that the police and fire get paid more. So the, the number for general services is going to be less anyway.
Well, no, because it's just a dollar fifty per hour. So it would just be however many hours they worked. So not taking into consideration their base salary. It's just a dollar fifty for every hour versus the, the page way was just a flat dollar amount.
Well, then my question is, can we get the hours?
Well, well, certainly. I mean, we can get them out of the payroll system. That'll take a little bit of time.
Then I'll go for the dollar fifty. If we get the hours.
So Ms. Solano and then Counselor Graham.
Thank you, Madam Chair and City Council. A couple of differences in the ARPA laws were passed from the time of we, that you approved, that council approved the police and fire. We were following the interim rule at the time, and the interim rule was directed at police and fire and those essential workers, but was not directed at a, at a, at a general service employee until the final regs. So when the final regs came out, we can go back and calculate per hour. I don't know that we can do this in two weeks. I know the work that Marissa has done just to prepare the information with, with the police department to present next Monday. So it will likely be a little bit longer than the two weeks. And also recall, this is sixty-one percent of all of the general service workers. Forty-nine percent or thirty-nine percent, that they're not in the calculation as they didn't, by department director review, work more than fifty percent of the time in a public-facing role. And so we also have many emails coming from that group of employees who, who do understand by, by their director that they didn't work more than fifty percent, and that fifty percent has been explained. But there is that group, that thirty-nine percent, that were page employees that are not part of this calculation. So we picked a place to, I think, to balance and compromise, and that's what the thousand dollars did.
I would, yeah, I would, I would like to see what those hours are, what that breaks down to before we approve or disapprove any.
Can we move this to June? That way, we have plenty of time to do it. That way, we're not rushing. We could get it right and bring it back to you guys at the, the first work session in June, and then it could go on to second, on the first reading.
And it's just a draft agenda, so we'll pull it before the final agenda comes in. We won't have to take, ask for city council action.
Wait, say that one more time, Ms. Solano.
The current resolution, because it's internal, is only sitting on the draft city council agenda, and we can pull it before the clerk publishes that draft agenda on Thursday.
Okay. Counselor Flores?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify something, and it's the elephant in the room, and that is that somehow getting Pueblo into parity with the other nine cities that are comparable is really not correct, because I'm looking at Westminster as, as an example here. Westminster has the same population as Pueblo. They're at a hundred and fifteen. We're probably at a hundred and eighteen. It's as close of a community that you can compare us to. And the reason for the Consumer Price Index of point eight-five is because the cost of living is cheaper in Pueblo. But when you have a budget of Westminster, it's, it's, it's close to three hundred thousand dollars. Our, what did I say? Three hundred, no, three hundred million. Did I say thousand? I got too excited there. Three hundred thousand, and our budget in Pueblo is one thirty-three. We have a poor city. I tell people that, and it's a reality. It is a reality that we do not have the budgets that these other cities do, but they also pay a lot more for housing and for a lot of other consumer goods, that we don't have the same problem. In fact, you're, you, you go to these nine other cities in Colorado, people can't afford to buy a house. You can still buy a house in Pueblo. And, and, and just look at my dash, the dashboard that's on. You, you can see the median price of housing in Pueblo and all these other cities in Denver and in Colorado Springs. But I, I say that because nobody wants to say that, but that has to be said, is that we have, we do have a difference in budgets that are big. And, you know, that, that's just the reality. And, but, you know, we do, you know, we Did it go, did it go off for a while? Oh, okay. So anyway, yeah, we, we just, you know, we need to go into this with our eyes wide open, is all I'm saying.
I agree with you. I think that's why so many of our employees have, you know, they enjoy working for the city and they work hard for the city. It just, that eighty-five percent has been there for twenty-some years. And at what time do we look at it? I, I personally think if we all sat down together, the four, the three unions and the city, we don't want to bankrupt you, but I could see us barely inching it up a little at a time and eventually getting it there instead of bankrupting the city all at once, because none of us want to lose a job. None of us want to be laid off. And we need the city to grow with us and not, we don't want to destroy the city at the same time.
Yeah, one of the reasons we're a poor city is because every employer in town, including the city, knows that if we can pay our employees a lot less than everybody else in the state, we can get away with it. And we'll have a poor city. Who cares? I'm making mine. If the employees don't make theirs, that's on them. Let them move to Westminster or wherever in the hell they want to move to. We don't want them to move. We want them to be here. They, we want them. There's nothing wrong with having some of the highest-paid employees working for the city. You, guess where they're gonna spend their money? Right here in the city. So let's pay them.
Okay, so it sounds like BJ, the majority of council wants to see the numbers for, for one point five, one and a half dollars for, at, per hour. And once we see those numbers, it'll be majority likely on first reading the, the second week in June, the second Monday.
Okay.
So I thank you all for coming. I know that you all probably worked a long day. Relaying Abriando, which looks fantastic, by the way, so thank you all for that. But we're, we're in support of you, so thanks for, for, thanks for coming. Thanks, BJ.
Thank you.
And thank you, Marissa, for putting all of those numbers together. Okay. Moving right along, Waste Connections update. Mr. Hayes and Mayor.
Yep, let me, let me begin and just do a brief introduction, then Andrew Hayes can fill, fill in some of the details.
Andrew Hayes can fill, fill in some of the details. And I want to preference the discussion by saying that we're going to be talking in generalities. We're happy to have a confidential session with the city council to talk about a specific contract negotiations, but I don't think it would behoove us to negotiate terms of the contract here in public, but we can tell you those areas and Andrew Hayes will talk to about those areas that we've been talking with Waste Connections about. Let me just say that in July of twenty twenty one, we were approached, approached by Waste Connections wanting to revise the contract with the dump, the terms and conditions, the franchise agreement, if you will, and, and our agreement with them. Primarily because they're interested. There are three cells there at the dump that are licensed to be landfills. One of those is owned by the city. It's been closed. It sort of sits between the two cells that are owned by Waste Connections. Waste Connections approached us about acquiring the city-owned cell so that they can make it all one big cell that would add to the efficiencies of that. So we've been talking with them about that transfer, what the terms of that transfer would be. One of our concerns, as I know one of your concerns is the high cost of dumping for the citizens of the city of Pueblo. So one of the things we've been talking about is dramatically expanding the reduced fees for residents on sort of a regular basis. So on a monthly basis, there'd be one day that we've proposed, you know, citizens in the city of Pueblo would get a significant discount on, on a truckload of trash that they would take to the dump. Andrew, you want to talk about the other areas that we're talking about at this point?
Sir, if I could make one correction, the, the portions of the land that are out there, there is, everything is owned by Waste Connections. So the city has already conveyed all of the phases over to Waste Connections in the past. There's no land conveyance as part of this particular transaction. It was initially part of the way that they had drafted the agreement. I think they believed that there were some land that they owned or that we owned. That is not the case. So this land, uh, the land is completely owned by Waste Connections at this point. What they've come to the city asking for is a certificate of designation that changes the way the landfill operates. As Mayor mentioned, there are three phases out there. They're trying to consolidate it into one phase. The phase, the way that that, what that does for them is it creates additional landfill volume space, right? And there's additional value in that. So in asking the city for this certificate of designation, we have been in discussions with them about some terms and conditions. Again, in, in generalities, if we can for tonight, some things that we want to address are the, the issues related to illegal dumping and the high cost of getting trash to the landfill. These are issues that are near to every Pueblo citizen's heart, right? Everybody who calls and has a trash complaint. This is one of the proximate causes. It's very expensive to go take your stuff to the landfill. So we've been talking about these items in, in particular. We've been, as I said, working on a draft agreement outlining the development review process for their certificate of designation. But in there, the terms and conditions we've kind of been referring to have been these discount days for city residents. A contribution from them to the city solid waste program specifically for establishing a household hazardous waste program. You may be familiar that the Public Department of Public Health and Environment hosts batteries six months to a year, a, a household hazardous waste drop-off date. So you have to bring your stuff to that. This would allow the city to have a year-round household hazardous waste drop-off program at this, at the recycle centers, our plan. So we've got some other pieces in, in motion to make that happen. This would just put us on a firm ground to get a new facility there that is built for that purpose. So there's some, some requests for contribution to that program. There's also a request for contribution to repair Hog Farm Road, which is the road that leads from Highway seventy eight into the landfill. So it's a public right of way as when, when the Waste Connections took over operations of the landfill from Zupan. That road used to be maintained by the landfill. And part of the negotiations with Waste Connections turned that road back over as a public right of way. So as part of this discussion, we're asking them to contribute back money to pay for a, a repair of that road to get it back up to speed for the next period of time. Another item we're asking, uh, we're discussing is, is a contribution to hire a consultant to review the application that they're putting in for the certificate of designation and the engineering design operations plan, which is the document that goes to the state. So they're, they're going to pay essentially for the consultant to review on the city's behalf. And then one of the other items that's pretty important here is the acceptance of city-generated waste. So not, I think, not when we have dumpster service, but for things that we haul to the landfill. We have all the time roadside cleanups, right? We have wastes, biosolids and grit from the wastewater treatment plant. Those items that go to the landfill go out there at a cost. And so we're asking them to accept those items at no cost for this, for the city-generated waste. Not again, where the city has dumpsters, dumpster service is a completely different element of their business, but we're asking for that as a, as a piece of this puzzle. As mentioned, the, the consolidation of these phases creates about sixteen million cubic yards of additional space in the landfill. And we have requested Waste Connections to come to present a work session later this month. They've not confirmed that yet, but we have tentatively scheduled them for May twenty second. Working with them now to try to get them to come back to present their, their position and maybe even have some more specifics about the agreement as things develop here. So that concludes our presentation. Mayor, turn it back to you.
We're happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Counselor Flores.
This certificate of designation, does that, does that mean that they assume the responsibility for the, the landfill? And it removes us from questioning anything going forward?
So the current operating agreement that we're operating under has Waste Connections accepted the environmental liability for the closure of Phase One, which was the phase that the city operated for a long time. So as part of their acceptance of the transfer of land for that, they took that on. They have the same environmental liability for the phases they've been operating since then, and they would continue to have liability for their phases. I hope that answers your question.
Well, I, I was more concerned about whether future we would have any fees and all of that. Full responsibility. Does that now and we can't say any future is, is the question with this certificate.
Sure. So the certificate of designation doesn't necessarily expire. It would change, it would be brought back to the table again for discussion if they added new landfill space, bought new land and wanted to bring that in. If they changed the way they wanted to operate. So the engineering design and operations plan that the state gives essentially sets terms and conditions for the way they must operate. And our certificate of designation would adopt those requirements as part of our approval of their operation. So unless they wanted to come back and change the way they're operating, or if they want to expand the landfill or change the phasing, that would be another opportunity for us to have another future discussion. At this point, it would likely be some time before we talked.
This might mean more of a legal question too, but it's my understanding that under the EPA laws involving any kind of environmental problem that we, the city will always be in the line of fire here. We really don't get anything by them assuming any responsibility because we're still in the line of fire the way they look at it. And, and so, so nobody could hold the city harmless or they can't really assume a hundred percent of the responsibility because we'll always be in the line of fire since we own that land years and years ago. And is that, i- is that true or not true?
So I'm not completely familiar with everything and I'd like, well, it's not final answer, but as I understand it, what we did own potentially, we had liability, but that was taken on by this company when they, they took over the other phases. As to the other phases, we've no dump exists when we own. So they're taking on all liability for those areas to this.
And typically there's
I gotta look at that more when, when it comes up. I think that what they may be coming to executive session when they get some idea of what this looks like. The certificate of designation doesn't address those issues. The certificate of designation is purely whether council and their discretionary authority, subject to them meeting certain requirements, is going to approve it. Basically, do you want a landfill here is what the issue is. But the liability issue is separate. I'm, I'm not seeing where the city is in the
So when they did their expansion, they purchased that other land on their own. We weren't involved in that?
That I'm going to refer back to Andrew because I, when I, I, I was involved in this about eight months ago and at that time we thought the city owned the land. But so I don't know that we've, it's ever been operated as a dump when the city
So I've chased back all the deeds, tracked back all of the different parcel transfers and everything. So there is, there is a all of the property that is currently included in phases one, two, or three is owned by Waste Connections. I believe that they recently purchased one more parcel. So there's one more out there that is not covered under the current certificate designation. And so that's a discussion point for us to have as well as we, as we move forward. To, to your question about environmental liability ongoing, right? There's a post-closure period and typically that's thirty years. Again, I, I would say the same as Bob, not final answer, but these are, generally speaking, there's a thirty-year period in which the landfill operator can be pursued for issues.
I have a lot more questions, but I, that really would be posed to Waste Connections and, you know, whether or not I should be worried about a huge company like that that's on the New York Stock Exchange, you know, we probably don't need to worry about them being able to handle any kind of environmental lawsuit. But again, i- if, if they have some document that they're saying, you know, we're not responsible anymore, I, I don't think they can do that.
No, but the city's not in the line of that respect to the property that we, that they never owned. Or if we did own it, at no time was operated as a dump. The one area was that, I can't think of the name of the Phase Two.
I think it was Phase
Phase One, which we did with Zupan and they originally took it over and they took on the liability. And that's in the agreement. So as to that issue, we can certainly review that, but that's the old closure.
And that thirty, that thirty-year period, post-closure period for Phase One is expiring this year.
Yeah, so
The, the extent of environmental liability for that phase is really nil.
And also we have a contractual, contractual obligation of Waste Connections is to, to, to cover that, I believe. Just say that. I'd need to look at those documents.
The, the big issue and probably answer this is what's going on with plastics now because it's, it's, what is happening with plastic right now because no country wants it anymore. And I'm just wondering what the heck we're doing with it and we're, we're gonna be faced with additional costs here. So I have a lot of questions for Waste Connections. Wait till they get here.
With respect to landfill and just, just to bring people up to speed here, there's been some recent development on our, our acceptance of plastics. So some of you may have heard issues from your constituents just in the past couple of weeks about that. So if I can, just indulge me for just a moment on that one. The the recycling center had to stop, but has since restarted accepting plastic waste. So we are separating waste streams. So plastics that are, they're coated plastic category number one, which is a polyethylene bottle or number two, which is like a milk jug, which is HDPE. Those two types of plastic are being accepted right now. We are still trying to get back to a place where we take three through seven minus, I think it's six. So those, those are a much smaller volume in the waste stream. Most of what we get at the recycle center are ones, about half as much twos and then everything else is miniscule amount. But just for constituents' awareness, the, the recycle center is taking those things, but it's a little bit more sorting when you get there. So we'll, we're going to put out some more information about that and we just appreciate everybody's patience with that. I know it's a, it's painful when you don't know what you have to do when you get there, but we're working with folks there at the site. So thank you.
Other questions or comments? Um, I would like to request an executive session about it so we can find out more of the, actually the details of the contract. And I'd like to have that before the pending Waste Connections work session. So that way we go in with some type of awareness in that work session. So if we can get that executive session scheduled, that would be great.
And the concept for the executive session is to instruct negotiators and is that appropriate? Is that where you're at? I don't know.
That's, that's exactly where we are.
Great. Other questions? Uh, thanks, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you.
All right, Chuck Roy, you're up, talking about road repairs and debreusing.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. So tonight I wanted to talk to you about where we are with our roads for the city of Pueblo and how we have expended our funds in two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three thus far. Here, right?
And I'm sorry to interrupt, please excuse me, Madam Chair and City Council. Tonight's presentation right now on the agenda is the follow-up from the city council retreat on Saturday, March fourth. That was modified from the agenda and just asked to be scheduled at a later time. Tonight's the later time.
All right, Chuck. Later time. All right. So kind of what we're going to talk about tonight is how we spent the money as far as the assessment of the roads to get to a matrix, an assessment for our road situation and how we go about prioritizing the roads within the city, which roads get the money each year. And then show you a little bit about the output that we got from the company who did the assessment. So from January to March twenty twenty-two, RAS, roadway asset services performed a pavement condition index for the city of Pueblo. They drove all of our roads, bigger roads they drove in two directions, smaller roads they drove in one direction. That's important when you start thinking about, you know, travel with some of our heavy loads go in one direction and they come back lighter. So on those bigger streets, they, they did two passes on there to make sure that we got a good condition of the road and to understand the failures that we're seeing in the roads themselves. And the output, what we're really looking for is that pavement condition index, that PCI kind of gives us an, an engineering assessment of where our roads are from zero to one hundred based on the engineering criteria. We also received a map database file that we are working right now to get it put onto the city website so that the citizens can actually access it and they can actually see what, what the condition index of their individual street is. And then all those assessments were done by national standards by, based on engineering criteria and requirements. So at the time of this assessment, there's about, there was about four hundred ninety-nine centerline miles in the city with four hundred ninety-three of those being asphalt and one point six miles of concrete. And then there's a several sections that about four point eight miles that were not assessed. Those are generally our cobble roads. It, system, they use a radar and they use like a lidar and they, they travel over the road and it scans it, gives it three-dimensional depth and all kinds of great numbers. If you're a math geek, you love it. But when you have a road that's cobble, it just, it messes the system up. It doesn't work right. And we do have some of those downtown that are really cobble roads with brick pavers in the road. So so the output from what you see there ranking from good to failed, for the most part, our roads are in the fair. Our average PCI index was sixty-two. Not great, but better than we actually thought it was going to be. That table in front of you gives you the total square yards of, of road for each of those categories. You see, we do have just about thirty-five hundred square yards that are actually in the completely failed condition. But we have eight hundred twenty-seven thousand in the good. The good are going to be the ones that are just done. The ones the developers just turned over to the city of Pueblo or roads that we have recently done a mill and overlay and just completed that, that work. So brought it back up to a, a grid, a good situation, a good condition index. So this is an example of what the citizens are going to see when they, when they go onto the website. You're going to see the streets and you're going to see that condition index number. This happens to be the ridge area near Sundance and Chisholm. If you know this area at all, those residential streets are some of the worst residential streets we have in the city. Going to be a very costly fix. Concrete is going to have to be upgraded first and then we can get in there and actually do the streets. But you can see that's kind of why we looked at Ridge as the major arterial collector road running through that area. And, and this is going to be available very shortly for everybody to take a look at. Obviously, if you have questions about certain areas, we can answer those for you at a later time. Just send us an email or let us know and we can get that exactly to you. But this is, this data is what we used, what we're using to determine which roads need to do it. Non-political, non-biased, the engineering data is there. It tells us where we need to do it. And then what we look at is, we do try and spread it around across the congressional, or the not congressional, but the city districts to make sure that we are being equitable, that we're looking at roads across the city. And I'm going to jump ahead real quick. And then I'll come back to it. But this gives you a graphic of the roads that we have repaired in two thousand twenty-two with, I'm going to call it blue. If it's purple, I'm colorblind, so just bear with me. Um, so the blue is what we actually paved or we have a contractor for pavement using 2022 money. And the green is what we have planned for this year. So you can see a very good diversification across the city of, of roads that we're looking at doing. I'm going to jump back now. Or show you the treatments. So these are the different kinds of distresses that we see in pavement. The first one with the number one is alligator cracking. That is, uh, some of the worst. When you, when you see that, it's pretty much a failed road. We're going to have to tear that road up and we're going to have to completely replace it when we see substantial amount of alligator cracking. Something's happened in the sub base underneath the asphalt and it's causing that breakup. Um, there's three that have number twos by them. That is your, your longitudinal and your transverse cracking. Sometimes that's from a cold joint when they put down the asphalt as they're doing their, their passes. You have that strip right between where they overlap. You get a joint right there. Some of it is failure, the subgrade. Some on the north side, our, our soils are horrible. Um, and there's a lot of movement, a lot of clay in it. So if we don't properly prepare that subgrade, we get a lot of movement and we get that transverse cracking. Uh, three is our typical patching that you'll see, um, when we have a utility line, uh, replacement or repair. They come back in and they do a patch. Again, those, every time you cut into the road, you're reducing the viability of the strength of that road. Four is our favorite potholes. We all know potholes. We love them. Five is raveling. Raveling happens as you, as the road starts to wear away and, and time happens, you don't do anything to the road. The asphalt that goes around the rock starts to wear away and expose the aggregate and it pops out. And that's the raveling. So an older road will have more raveling. Uh, running, uh, again, that's a failure of the sub base or an issue with the oil. And then weathering, which I'm going to show you here in a minute, is our most common issue here in the city is just age. It's just not doing anything to the road for a period of time, not putting a fresh coat of oil on it, not looking at it in a long time. And a lot of our roads, I think, I'm sure you hear in a minute, about 80% of our roads are having weary, uh, weathering issues. And that's just need to get some more oil down on it. So 81% is in the low weathering, uh, classification. Almost 12% linear cracks. And then just kind of splattering of various little percentages of the other stuff. But weathering is our most common issue here in the city, followed by linear cracking. Good news is those are the cheapest things to fix. So the various treatments that we have at our disposal, uh, crack sealing, that's one of the biggest things that we do in the city. Our city crews, uh, do crack sealing. It's, they get out there, they put the, the, uh, the mastic, they put the oil inside those cracks, fill them up and that moves us forward. Um, every one of those cracks is a potential location for water to get to the sub base and to soften the sub base, cause those further bigger issues that we talked about rutting, alligator cracking. So we want to get those sealed up as soon as we can. It's the cheapest thing we can do in the city as well. The next you have is a seal coat, same kind of thing. You, you crack seal it and you're going to put just fresh oil over the top of it. Chip seal puts more aggregate and oil back on top. It gives you a new wearing surface, uh, for the streets. Slurry seal similar, a little different, a little different application for a higher, uh, higher traffic volume of roads. And then as we start to move forward, uh, what, what you're going to see is the cheaper solutions, uh, the crack seal, the worst solution is full depth repair. And so our goal here or what we need to, our goal for the city needs to be keeping as many of our roads in that chip seal in that slurry seal category before they fall off that, the tier down to that next level of cost. We want to catch those roads earlier. So when people say, well, how come you haven't done my road? My road is the worst road in the city. Well, you're right. It probably is the worst road in the city, but it's the most costly road right now to fix. And if I can save four or five other roads or segments and keep them up. So we don't have a costly repair like that, then that's, that's a good use of our funds. Now that doesn't mean we're not going to get to that worst road, but it, but it's, we, we need to save the roads that we can before they fall off the edge. Then there's, there's other, other treatments there. Um, we do a lot of milling overlay in the city right now and we, uh, that's where we go in there. That's what we're doing at Abriendo right now. It's what we're doing on Troy. We started Troy today. It's what we did on Ridge. So that, that's our, our biggest, uh, one of the biggest things we do in the city and we want to get away from that. And so, uh, I think next week you're going to see a couple of projects, uh, for award that are, um, with from A1 chip seal. So we're going to try and get to that restorative instead of this, this worst case scenario failed road. Want to save those roads or chip seals, putting more oil on there, putting a new wearing course uh, across the city, uh, Goodnight and Cleveland. We, one of the first ones will get back on with a chip seal or a cape seal. And then the Regency Crest area and the Crestview Hills. So there's a lot of words on this page. What I want you to focus in on is the cost per lane miles. Look in that column. So when we get, when we're sitting in that maintenance category, you know, we're in the, the 85 to 94 PCI range, but we're in the thousands of dollars to, to make those repairs. We start dropping over to that next thing we're in the preservation. We're 10, 10s of thousands of dollars. And those first two categories that cracks, uh, maintenance and the preservation, we do not have to do ADA upgrades. Because we're not changing the surface of the road. Once we go down to the Cape seal and everything down below there, we have to invest in our concrete ADA improvements, uh, which we need. But again, that's take, it's about half of the amount of, uh, for the paving. So you basically double the cost of your project to do the ADA upgrades and do a pavement, uh, improvement. And we get down in the, in the full depth repair or FDR, we're in millions of dollars. So again, to my point that we want to stay in that thousands and 10,000s of dollars range, we can do a lot more of our roads if we get on them early and we, uh, we do that preventive maintenance instead of, uh, critical failure. So from that, that report that the, uh, that RAS did for us, um, we put together three budget models so far. Uh, we can tweak these any way we need to, but this is looking at a 30 year projection of what we need funding wise to be able to maintain, to improve, or if we continue with what we've been doing for the last, well, prior to last year, uh, what's going to happen to our roads? So if we set, uh, according to this model, if we set a PCI goal of let's say 82, um, just under the good range, um, but, but still, uh, better than what we currently are. We would need, uh, for the first five years, we would need $25 million a year. The, the next 10 years, we would need $20 million. And then we could go back down to about 12, about 14 million, 15 million for the last, say, uh, 14 years of the cycle. That's if we want to increase our, our roads and make our roads 82 as a PCI average. To maintain our 62 or slightly improve, we need $10 million a year. And if we do anything less than that, our roads are going to deteriorate. And you'll see that we will be down at the end of 30 years if, if we just put $4 million, which is what our previous budget was. We will be falling below a PCI of 50. And if you this where a 50 is, is poor. And I don't think the people in the city want poor roads. They, they definitely have spoken very often that they want roads that are drivable. So again, looking at those, those, uh, projections, so this is the increased the PCI goal with the dark green being roads in the, uh, good condition and the dark red being a failure condition. So if we increase our, our PCI goal to, to 85 actions, what it is here, then you'll see that more of our roads are in those, that green to yellow range. And we actually improve as you would expect if you put in that much money into it. Maintaining, if we maintain, the good gets good and the bad stays bad. That's, that's the bottom line. If we, if we keep it at 10, you're, see by year 20, you see how much more red we have because we won't be able to get to those additional, uh, additional roads that need to be full repair. So things are going to fall off and we do what we can, but things are going to fall off. And then obviously if we go back to the 4 million, it's not going to get any better. It gets substantially worse, uh, our road condition at the 30 year mark. So with that in mind, how did I spend, how did I spend? How did we spend the 2022 budget of 7.25 million dollars that we had? City Center in Santa Fe, uh, paving on Hudson, Grand and West 15th Street. Street improvements, um, street improvements means both concrete and asphalt repairs on Covina Court. Uh, asphalt paving on Northern between, uh, South Prairie and Pueblo Boulevard. Uh, we're doing the Cleveland to Washington on Abriendo. ADA and asphalt paving improvements on, uh, was that? Oh, that's Ridge. Yeah, that's Ridge. And then Alan Hamel between Santa Fe and Main Street will be done as well. The miscellaneous concrete repairs are the little things. Uh, citizens call us up and say, hey, this is, this is bad. Or, or we are out there doing the street sweeping and we noticed that there's a, there's a massive pothole or something like that. And so these, this is where we catch some of those citizen requested ADA improvements. My corner is, is, is bad and I, I can't get my kid to school. I push my, my kid two blocks to school. Um, and there's no curb ramps for them to, to get through. This is where we, we do those extra projects in. And then we have ADA upgrades on Dylan that actually began today as well. And then ADA upgrades on Joplin, which is currently underway at about 50% complete. So that means that of the, of the 7.25 million, we have about 2.1 million that's unobligated. I'm going to require an additional 309,000 of that for South Prairie concrete improvements. The budget item just came through, so that'll leave me about $1.8 million of 2022 money to, to spend, um, on road improvements. And this year there's a, you can see the list is a lot longer. We have a $10 million budget this year. Bottom line is right now I have obligated or expended 8.9 million dollars of that $10 million budget in, in road improvements. We have to front load it, uh, to get on the schedule for the paving and to get on the contractors for the, the concrete. So we've been really pushing hard these last two months. My team has, uh, I think we had, we have 12 to 15 items on council next week for award for just projects award, uh, that you'll see here. So, um, the number one on the list is paving of Prairie Avenue between Northern and Pueblo. We, uh, we got the concrete awarded, uh, I believe it was previously, it'll be May 8th, uh, the concrete improvements be awarded. We have about three months of concrete work to do, uh, before we can get on paving. So we're looking at paving Prairie in August. August, September timeframe, actually it's going to be right after, uh, after the, the state fairs, when we plan to start, uh, paving on Prairie. And we're going to get lots of complaints, but the road's going to be nice when it's done. Um, Joplin, like I mentioned, we doing the concrete upgrades. We're going to the, we're doing paving on Joplin this year. Troy between, uh, 50 and 47 is, uh, underway right now. Uh, Cheyenne, uh, between 11th and 14th, we're doing some street improvements and curb and gutter. And then 11th Street from AD, which is just west of the bridge to Pueblo Boulevard, that'll be a completely, uh, milling overlay improvement. As I mentioned, Regency Crest and Crestview Hills, that is the, uh, the maintenance kind of stuff. Fixing those roads again on the north side, they're bad and that section down, uh, I believe it's Omega Homes. Yeah, I, I don't know what's going on down there, but it's bad. That's all I can say. Um, Lime Road, currently Lime Road is a concrete road from I-25 out to the Union Pacific Railroad tracks just past, um, CS Wind. Um, that road is completely failed. Um, and with the anticipated increased truck traffic, uh, with the expansion of CS winds, that road's not going to get any better. So we would like to repave that as well. Uh, I mentioned, uh, Cleveland, Goodnight, that's from Abriendo to the city park. Baltimore from, uh, Highway 50 down to West 29th Street. There's some sanitary sewer upgrades that are going to happen at the same time. Sixth Street from 24th to 29th, that's in front of the fire station. Uh, we just did some concrete work there and, and the, uh, they like to wash their trucks and that water likes to sit on the asphalt and just tear up the asphalt. Water and asphalt do not, not mix very well. And then Starlight Road from, uh, Bridle Trail to the city limits. A lot of our people that come in from, uh, from West Cliff and from the south come up that road. I joke quite often that that road is worse than roads I drove on in Iraq. So if you, if you haven't been down there, you'll, you'll understand. And then we did some emergency repairs, uh, at 31st Street in the Wild Horse Creek. So that's our 8.9, uh, summary. There's a couple bids that are still out that we're waiting for, uh, that'll be coming for you in the next month. We already talked about the different locations, the, the star map here. What do we need? What's the next step? So as I mentioned, we're going to provide the PCI index for the city on the website. Uh, we believe that, that 85 PCI is, is a little bit optimistic, too optimistic. We believe that a 72 PCI is more realistic for the city of Pueblo and something we can achieve. Uh, we need to formalize that long range maintenance plan. We need to be committed to our roads and commit that we're going to have a certain amount of each year, not go back down to that 4 million. We also need to figure out how we're going to pay for that. What, what revenue stream, what, what, what's going to generate? Because with the, the debreusing, that was a, a shot in the arm of money to get us going. But now why are we going to maintain that, that, that budget that we need to keep our roads going? And then our last point would be that in 2027, do a reassessment of the roads. Do I drive those roads again and get a current snap, snapshot? That's about five years out. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I will take any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Roy. What questions are there from council, councillor Flores?
I didn't notice, uh, the, the traffic lights as a cost. Does that usually include in the, the original bid when you have to replace?
If, if we have to upgrade the traffic signals, like in the case of Prairie, we are upgrading two sets of signals. That is included in the concrete, uh, cost for that project. So we are, uh, changing the location of the Hawk and we're moving it to a signalized intersection at O'Neal and Prairie. And then where we're doing the, I'm sorry, what's a Hawk? A Hawk is a push button crossing. Think about, um, is it Thatcher? As you're coming around the corner there, that light only comes on when you push the button. That's, that's a Hawk. It's a pedestrian crossing. Um, and it's not a, a normal stop for, uh, for cars. So we are getting rid of that pedestrian crossing just to the south of O'Neal and putting a full signalized intersection at O'Neal. Uh, we did traffic studies and saw how many kids are actually crossing the street to those apartments on the other side. And it was substantial at Ward to putting in, uh, traffic signal there. And then we're upgrading the, the signal at Jones and Prairie.
There's, you were going over all of the deficiencies that can occur to pavement and one of noticed, because I go over there a lot, the home area. It's like, it, it's almost like they paved horizontally, vertically. And you go 100 feet and you hit a, it's just.
And it's a three inch wide crack. That's about three inches deep. Yes.
And that.
And the interesting part is if you cross over Red Creek Springs Road and you look at the developments down there, they don't have that same problem.
Right.
And, and they're relatively the same age of development. So what happened? If you remember about a year ago, when we came to you and we were wanting to upgrade the specifications, we were wanting to improve that. And there was a lot of pushback from some of the developers and whatnot. Well, that's why the roads over in that area are that way is because the standard, what 60 years ago was not the same as 40 years ago, as it's 20 years ago, it, it lessened. And those roads are paying the price of it.
Thank you for this report. I mean, I, this is really an impressive report. I mean, it, it gives us all the information that we need and it's, you know, it would, it's just a great report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Maitri.
Um, how much did we receive from the debreusing last year? What was the amount? Kind of off the top of your head?
Well, I, 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 I have to look.
Do we, is it only because the, um, ballot measure said 5 million? Is that really all we can put towards that? Or can we put all the debreusing money towards the roads?
Minimum 5 million.
So we can allocate that through council that we make sure that all, um, all of the debreusing goes towards road repair. Cause I, that's really what the public.
Don't air mark funds other than that commitment. So you handle that every year in your budget.
In the budget. Mm-hmm. So we can just out, make sure that we allocate all the debreusing towards that. I mean, that's what people voted for. Was to improve the roads. And, um, let me see. Do you remember Andrew, how much it was? Cause it was quite.
No, you're talking about the debreusing number?
Yeah.
I don't recall the number. I know that.
About three times the amount?
I, I couldn't say. I know we.
I, I couldn't say. I know we made a commitment of, of $10 million from 2022 and 2023.
No, 5 million.
Well, we committed to $5 million, but we committed in the budget, $10 million for these two years. But that is not, that's not set in stone for the future.
Correct.
So that was kind of the importance of the
But you're asking, but you're saying Chuck, that we need additional funds other than what you've already
No, what I'm saying is going forward. So year 2024, we need to make sure we're putting at least $10 million towards roads if we want to maintain.
In addition to what you're getting now or just can keep it at 10?
We need to keep the streets and roads budget at, at least $10 million.
Can you use more than 10 million or is it just a scheduling problem?
So right now, eh, some of it's a scheduling problem. Um, Marietta, Beltramo, um, most of our asphalt paving guys are, they're full bore. Concrete guys, we are keeping a lot of concrete guys. We're seeing a lot of people come down from Denver now and bid our jobs, which, you know, is great, but we also want to make sure we keep our local concrete contractors busy as well. So we could use more, absolutely. But our capacity from our local guys is pretty full. With, with respect to the model we showed you, right? We showed you a 30-year projection. If, if council or, or leadership want a faster track to get to a 72 PCI. That's just more dollars invested between now and then. So there's a lot of levers we can pull to try to get there. We projected something that seems reasonable, given how we got here over the long term and, and a plan that we can use to dig ourselves back out. But that 72 PCI, we, we showed you a model for getting to an 82, I think. 85, yeah. 85. So that's pretty high. We can come back and show you what 72 looks like. We just need time to re, restack that model and show you what that looks like going forward for, uh, for in terms of investment over the long term. So.
I know we invested a lot in 24th Street. Are we gonna have, um, we're gonna have some, you know, are we gonna have to take it up a little bit to do?
Right now, I know they're looking at putting that new sewer line on the north side of, of 24th and behind the right away. I'm not sure they've completely decided exactly where it's gonna go, but I, last I heard, the plan was north of 24, not actually in the roadway. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that all that you, um, think that is gonna affect that, would affect that street?
Well, we know we have the fire station coming in right there at Perry. Uh, so there's gonna be a little bit of, uh, of changes and things that are gonna have to happen there as we, as we adjust the road and we actually put the, that section of Perry in, but tearing up overall 24th, I don't see it.
Okay.
The raised grant is also another place where Sun Mountain has been part of that project. So that's right now, we're in the initial discussion phases with FHWA about the, uh, intergovernmental agreement there and how we're gonna move forward and timing of funds, but that's one more place where there's, uh, prospective project right there. And then the, the other piece of that raised grant is an extension, or at least the design of a bridge and the extension of a corridor. Um, or the, the planning for an extended corridor from 24th Street over toward, um, uh, High Street. So there's, uh, several pieces that come in together as part of the raised grant as well. So there's some other, um, activity and planning that's going on for that, for that area.
Okay. Thank you. Other, uh, Counsel Graham?
Are we gonna reintroduce the street repair tax for some of these funds?
Pardon me?
Street repair? On the water bill?
Street repair.
Street repair, the
Enterprise, yeah, we're not collecting any of that.
I know we're not now, but we just postponed it for 12 more months, right? Are we gonna bring that back to the table?
I don't have any plans to bring it back to the table right now. I mean, I, so far with the economic condition, the city of Pueblo, we're able to get this $10 million without assessing that additional fee on, on property owners. So I don't have any plans to bring it back to the table right now. You know, you've heard me say that I didn't think that was a fair way to do it anyway. Fair way to do it was the sales tax. So everybody who comes to the city and shops is paying, uh, to repair our streets, but compromise we reached was that we debruise rather than impose the sales tax. So that's where we're at right now.
Then is there a, a roundabout number for this 72?
Uh, I don't have it.
How many millions?
We'd need to rerun it. But, and again, it's based on whether you want a 30-year model or a 20-year or something like that. So we can, we can run a few different scenarios and we'll bring that back to you. I, I, I think that's a very important piece that you need to see. This just showed a, the, 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 the really expensive option and the, we don't want to be here option. And we need to be somewhere in the middle. I think that 72 is a good reasonable number to work toward and to maintain. But the question is, how fast do you want to get there? And how much do you want to invest over time to get to that point? Those are, those are decisions for, for you and, and leadership to make. So, uh, we're, we're gonna set you up so that you have options and make it a, make it, make it possible to get there.
Right. And then just one more thing. Do you think we can get some of these slides put out on the city website? So people are
Yeah, Chuck, Chuck mentioned that we're trying to get that. Actually, the map is out there. It's on the GIS. If you click through the GIS portal, you can actually get to a city road condition map. But there will be a link off of the Public Works page. That's gonna have a little bit of a summary of some of the slide information as well as a summary of the report. Uh, and then again, citizens can go in and click on the map, interact with it, see the different colors, click on their street, see the condition index. So if you've got questions about it, it's certainly a, a conversation starter about how we pick roads. Why is my road not being done? It's red. Those kinds of things we can certainly talk to folks about, but it's a, it's a starting point for information and conversation about how we are doing our work. The other piece of that that we want to do in that map is update projects. So you can see year over year, you can click a, click something that will turn on eight, all these roads that were red have now turned green in 2023 or 2024. And that's a map that we can keep updating. And again, Chuck mentioned about a, about a five-year cycle between doing these baseline assessments. They're relatively inexpensive. But they give us a snapshot in time of the actual road conditions. So the 2027 validation of our model will be very important. It'll tell us if we've got our degradation curves right, and it'll tell us if we are on the right track or not. So those are gonna be important checkups along the way as we're doing this long range plan.
Yeah, yeah. I was, I was just thinking even similar, just like on the Facebook page, I know.
Well.
PIO has been posting, but I think it's informational when she goes and does those videos and, and people learn that you have to lay ADA, you know, curves before you can middle and I get that question a lot and what's the process? And it's like, okay, Abriando, for example, you see all these nice new cross areas and like now they're gonna come in and pave. And so maybe I know she's been doing it for Abriando, but maybe just these other projects you're talking about. I think it makes citizens feel at ease that we're spending, um, their taxpayer dollars.
They're gonna, they're gonna see us in their neighborhoods because we're all over the place right now. As I said, started Troy, Joplin's under, underway. Prairie's coming. Finally, we're gonna get Prairie. And, and you can see that we're trying to focus first on the arterials and the collectors, the high volume traffic ways first. And then try and do a few of the residential's each year as well. We gotta, we gotta do the big roads to get commerce moving throughout the city. So that's kind of how we focused. Right now for 2024, I'm looking at Lehigh, looking at Jones, Sinclair and Dylan. Yeah. Those are the, those are the four I'm kind of looking at right now. Oh, and, and Northern, the rest of Northern from, uh, Prairie to I-25. The, one of the biggest challenges that we have is working with the utility companies and making sure that their lines are upgraded and that they're fixed before we come through and put it, do a pavement job on top of it. So Northern was gonna be done this year, but Board of Waterworks and Sanitary Sewer had some major upgrades they have to do, which they're gonna do this year. So then I can pave it next year.
Access to, um, public information, uh, uh, in, in the office, we regularly talk about featuring the directors in podcasts equivalent thereof on Channel 17 as well. So Haley has some grand ideas about, you know, what can we get out there on Channel 17 and, and in the works? But lots of the different directors can certainly host those.
How are we handling just simple potholes?
So what
To tide people down until you get it paved?
So, um, what we have is the street crews go out there. They do a cold mix patch. They, they go out, clean out the hole a little bit and then they put that in there. That is absolutely a temporary patch. First time you run, uh, a snowplow over the top of it, it's probably gonna pop it out. So it really is just a, really a Band-Aid, but we do have our crews out every day doing, uh, cold mix patching for potholes.
And where are they? What, are they just calling down to Public Works to complain? Or how, do you have a system?
Yeah, that's the most, that's the biggest thing is we get, uh, the complaints and then also they have their, uh, their routes that they kind of know. Uh, that, that historically we've always had potholes in this area. So after a big rainstorm or a snowstorm, those guys will drive that route again and then they'll come behind it and they'll just fill in the potholes again. Until we can get to it and do a, a milling overlay or a, or a, a full depth repair on it. In terms of how to submit a complaint, we have via OpenGov. There's also links off of our Public Works website and they can always call. So during work hours. Yes.
Great. Seeing other, no other questions for Mr. Hayes and Mr. Roy. Thanks for that update. Last on our agenda, Dola Grant, Pueblo Land Use Code Project, Mr. Hobson.
There we go. Good evening, council members. Eric Greta Scher. I'm gonna talk with you about the Pueblo Land Use Code Project. And the funding, uh, the grant from the Department of Local Affairs, uh, Energy Impact Assistance Funds. The purpose of the project is to develop a new land use and subdivision code that modernizes both sections of the municipal code. Establishes a unified zoning and subdivision section under one title in the city municipal code. Another part of the project would be the update of the city's historical preservation code. Unified Development Code provides regulations, uh, in which traditional zoning and subdivision regulations are combined under one title, one section of the municipal code. By doing this, the Unified Code helps local governments to respond better to development, uh, the way development occurs and also avoids overlapping, uh, regulations, uh, that occur when you have two separate titles. About two thirds of the cities in the front range have had Unified Development Code, uh, as part of their, uh, municipal code. And actually, most of these have had a Unified Development Code since the mid 2000s. And in a lot of cases, they're now updating their Unified Code. And Pueblo, we're looking at just adopting, putting into, uh, our municipal code, a Unified Code where subdivision and zoning are within one title, one section of our municipal code. Zoning and development regulations. These are the primary tools the city uses to implement the future land use plan policies and recommendations of the regional comprehensive plan. More than three years ago, uh, we went to city council prior to the work beginning on the regional comprehensive plan and, and reviewed a strategy whereby we would look at redoing the city's land use codes. But to do that, we needed to update the regional comprehensive plan prior to taking on a redo of our land use code. And so over a two-year period of time, we worked in cooperation with Pueblo County and redid the regional, uh, land use code. And now we're looking at funding to, to be in place to be able to, to do a new land use code for the city of Pueblo. As I said, the regional comprehensive plan was approved in 2022 and that was a two-year effort combination. Uh, city of, uh, Pueblo, Pueblo County, uh, the other two statutory, uh, cities or towns within Pueblo County. All worked together for completing a unified regional comprehensive plan. And that's a plan that, that's the same plan is adopted by the county as well as the city. And then we look at if there's any changes, we try to, you know, to keep consistency in the code. So those changes are typically adopted by both the city and the county. Um, the slide shows the three objectives. I won't go through all of those, but those were the three primary objectives of the re, of the regional comprehensive plan. While we were doing the, the regional comp plan, we worked on, uh, one of our standards that we really knew needed to be adjusted. And that was our multifamily residential standards. And worked through the Planning and Zoning Commission, city council adopted a change in our standards where we adopted, uh, development standards for multifamily housing. Prior to that time, uh, multifamily housing was treated as far as development standards, the same way any kind of retail development would be looked at in the city. And so we now have standards that pertain specifically to multifamily type of housing. Currently, the Planning and Zoning Commission is working on drafting an accessory dwelling unit, uh, code amendment to this, uh, to the city, uh, land use code. And we anticipate even prior to the time of, uh, adoption of a new land use code of having an accessory dwelling unit, uh, ordinance that would be able to be, to allow accessory dwelling units in certain residential areas within the city. Um, likely anticipate that's gonna be brought to Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, early summer and to city council by the end of the summer. So what is included in a land use zoning code? Well, the regulations, they're design standards that address zoning and land use, building setbacks, building heights, parking, landscaping and neighborhood character. Uh, they also address the application procedures and other regulations that pertain to development within the city of Pueblo. For the most part, the current zoning code that we operate, uh, under was adopted in 1968. We've had many, many amendments over the years, but we still are working on a, uh, land use code that's over 50 years old. The 1968 zoning code failed to recognize the incongruent relationship between historic urban neighborhoods and new developments that were expanding on the edges of the city. The code established citywide standards, no matter what residential district you were in, no matter what location you were in the city. There were standards set up for residential development. And we can be really critical of that today, but that was the standard that many cities were using in 1968 and early 70s. That was the trend at that time. Although most cities have looked at updating and making adjustments to the land use code that, uh, address the, uh, non-conformities that were established through, uh, their suburban style, uh, residential codes, for example. In all but two of our residential zoning, uh, zone districts, uh, we don't have it in the R1 or in the mobile home district. All the remaining residential zone districts have a minimum width of the lot of 50 feet. Well, in the older sections of the city, you can kind of see in the map or established development areas. A great percentage of those lots are less than, than 50 feet. And so, um, immediately by adopting that code is a correct, it, it established non-conforming lots that require variances for virtually any kind of land uses that are changed or modifications or any expansion of building, uh, any of the homes, uh, any garages that are added to those properties. They all require pretty much variances. And anytime that the properties trade, uh, change ownership, they require certificates to be issued by our, by the planning, uh, department indicating that these are legal, non-conforming lots. And this is something that has been a hindrance for the redevelopment, uh, improvement of the older established areas of the city. There are seven goals of the new, uh, Unified Land Use Code. And those are gonna go through quickly. They, they will, uh, assess the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and audit, uh, the contents of the existing code. What need, what works, what doesn't work and what do we need to really focus on improving? The second thing is we will look at, uh, modernizing the code, the uses, expand flexibility and provide alternative compliance methods that are appropriate for the different neighborhoods within the city. And then also look at ways to be able to, uh, have the code address the larger developments such as if we, if there's an annexation of say the Jackson Ranch area, which is a 2,000 acre annexation that we're in the middle of processing that will probably be coming to council in the next, uh, three to, three to four months. We'll look at modifying and reducing, uh, the number of properties that are non-conforming, uh, with the uses and standards. And those are gonna be the areas that are the core areas of the city where they were platted originally with 25 foot wide lots and they were sold at 25 foot, a lot and a half, 37 and a half with twenty-five-foot wide lots and they were sold at twenty-five foot, a lot and a half, thirty-seven and a half foot or fifty foot. Um, and we have those all over the city, uh, just, uh, kind of go back to the, in sixty-eight when the properties were rezoned. Uh, the way that, uh, Planning Department and City Council looked at those at that time was that, uh, if a lot, if an area that predominantly had five thousand square foot lots, uh, those areas, they zone those R-two. If there were areas that predominantly had four thousand square foot lots, they were zoned R-three. Didn't matter what the width, uh, the width was or, uh, new code. And then for the lots that were three thousand square feet or less, those were zoned R-four. Well, then when we did the zoning, the, uh, R-two was single-family, R-three, you could have, uh, duplexes. And R-four, you could have up to four, four units, uh, uh, within those areas. Well, those lots were so small, it was a big challenge to be able to get that amount of density into those lots. But because they had minimum square footages for those lots, they set the zoning that way. And so you go back and time and time again, when people come in and look at their zoning, you look at what the square footage of lots were. And it created the non-conformities, but they did have consensus, consistencies in the width or in the acreage of the lots. So the other thing we want to do is to, uh, update the standards to facilitate and encourage redevelopment and business investment uh, within the existing commercial corridors and then stimulate infill within residential neighborhoods. Those are the seven, uh, goals we have of the, of adopting a, a new land use code for the city. The, uh, timeline for the project is a twenty-four-month time period. And we intend to hire, uh, a professional consultant team to assist the city in developing a new land use code. We already have a fair amount of connection with groups and, and within the community to be able to go out and, um, hear their, um, desires for what they'd like to see within land, land use code to find out what the problems are, what things they'd like to have us address. And, uh, we feel like we have, uh, a good rapport that we want to continue to be able to, to hear what the community like to, to, uh, see within a land use code that meets the needs of the city of Pueblo. The funding for the project, uh, we have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that was allocated last year from ARPA funds. And then we just received a grant from the Department of Local Affairs Energy Impact Assistance Fund for a hundred ninety-five thousand. So we have a total of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to complete the project. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thanks, Mr. Hobson. What questions are there from council? Councilor Flores?
What, what is the minimum square footage on a lot to be able to put a secondary residence on it?
Like an, as, an accessory dwelling unit?
Accessory deal, yeah.
Um, there really isn't a minimum, uh, square footage of, on the lot itself, um, other than, oh, well, there, there's a lot coverage of structures, um, and so in the proposed ordinance, we're gonna increase the percentage of lot coverage that would be allowed on properties that have, um, accessory dwelling units. And it, it kind of, it depends on the zone district, but it would be more, currently today, we have a fifty percent. Most residential, uh, zone districts have, you can have fifty percent, uh, structures within your lot. And in the smaller, uh, uh, lots, we're gonna increase that to somewhere between sixty to sixty-five percent lot coverage.
Do you see this new code, uh, expediting the time it takes to get permits and, and approval?
I think that it, that it could, uh, I think, uh, what we would like to see is that there would be a better understanding of what our regu, the regulations are and, uh, the, uh, consistency of how though, how the regulations are applied. And so I do think that it could improve, uh, the timeliness of, uh, processing applications. There are two other factors though, and it's just, um, the projects that take longer to be, uh, issued permits typically have more reviews and the, the submittals aren't necessarily as complete as we'd like to. And I think the other part of it is we need to, uh, dedicate staffing within each review department that specifically is responsible for, uh, reviews and are held accountable for the timeliness of the reviews. That's probably our, our biggest single problem is, uh, getting timely reviews and then getting good submittals.
Any comments on what the state was trying to do to a community like Pueblo? With, uh, this law that they, uh, have now set aside, are gonna do a study. What, what, what was the state up to there in trying to take local power away from us?
Boy, it's, it's like eight twenty-five. It's, uh, I mean, it, it would have really, it would, this would have, uh, taken, uh, local land use and, um, basically placed, placed it with the state legislature uh, to develop a model code that, uh, you would either have to use that code or adopt a code within the city that would be very similar to that. It eliminated any parking requirements, uh, the middle housing, which I guess Pueblo was a two, is identified as a tier-one city. So the middle housing, um, the, uh, key corridors, uh, section of the, uh, the ADUs that were, uh, basically would, and that, that, this may not be eliminated from the bill, the ADU section where they're, they would apply anywhere, any residential, uh, zone district. Uh, the middle housing had, uh, four, uh, four residential units per lot, but they didn't define what a lot and he's, what the size of the lot would be. Um, and then, uh, you couldn't approve or require any new parking in any new residential development. It was at the developer's discretion. So there's a lot of issues with that, uh, the proposals that, uh, the amendments that have been presented. Um, if adopted, um, my understanding is Colorado Municipal League is gonna be more favorable to, to that, but it would be, uh, it would be a significant change and we would be like, under this, uh, grant, if, if, if the legislation was adopted and my sense is that if it is adopted in the format or near the format that it was originally proposed, it would likely be tested in court. But after that, if in fact we are held to the state model, uh, land use code, then we would be looking at, uh, kind of a different approach than we are to this and hopefully that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, thank you, Madam Chair and Council. I was going to res, to respond and remind that, um, thank you to Councilor Maestri. It was her suggestion that, uh, Scott come to speak tonight before, um, uh, the ordinance to accept the grant is on, on next Monday's, um, agenda. Um, and then I wanted to add that, um, what the staff meets with the Dola representatives, um, on a monthly basis. And that grant, um, the Energy Impact Grant, it came to the attention from Tara Marshall, who you've met before, that, um, they were offering the grant cycle again with the amount of up to two hundred thousand dollars. And that it did include and extend to rewriting that, the, the code. And so they strongly urged the city to apply for the grant when we originally put the ARPA dollars together for expenditures. We had the full four hundred and twenty thousand in that, um, in the lost revenue component because it didn't qualify for ARPA general basic, but it did out of that lost revenue. So really with the help of Dola, that saved some of our ARPA dollars and or some, I don't know where we're gonna find the other one ninety-five. So I, I didn't think we get, we got to say that to you, counselor, last week. Um, so that, but Scott put it all together and it was good for today.
Um, Mr. Hobson, is this going to, these land use changes, are they going to affect, the current subdivisions or are, is this all for future? Because you know, um, if you're gonna mix use some of what we have now, people are established in their neighborhoods and they may not want mixed use. So how, how is this gonna work?
Um, I mean, we're gonna look at what, uh, the, uh, strategies and the, uh, policies that are proposed within the regional comprehensive plan. And the current comprehensive plan identifies that the suburban neighborhoods stay pretty much single-family suburban and that the more core urban, uh, areas of the city have a higher level of mixed use. And so, um, we're gonna have to go through the process, but the, that's what the land, that's what the, uh, comp plan basically says. Uh, that, uh, we can have, uh, mixed use on, uh, some of the more higher level, uh, commercial corridors and the core areas of the city can, uh, have more mixed use. And, uh, we, it favors higher density, uh, where more local services are. And that the single-family residential areas on the edges of the city are more likely to, to remain that way. And that's the policies and that's what we intend to, uh, uh, include within the, within the zoning code.
Yeah, I think that's a concern to citizens. That's why I asked about it, um, you know? They buy in a single-family neighborhood, that's what they'd like to stay it in, you know? And any further development around it, they'd like to keep it single-family. So, um, they've already bought and established in those neighborhoods. That's their, sort of come in and try to say to change it up isn't fair to the taxpayers and citizens. So I could see the mixed use coming in future development, future subdivisions. But I just was wondering how much it was going to affect, you know, what we have going on now. Uh, let's just, you know, Red Creek Springs Road, let's, let's go the Domega project. How would it, how would the changes in the land use codes affect that, um, for Regency and all of those?
A Red Creek Springs Road, Domega Homes is in a suburban, uh, future land use area with, uh, density in the range of two to five units. And, uh, Domega Homes, uh, uh, at least in the, the hundred and thirty-three acres that have developed during the time I've worked on annexation and land use, um, have averaged about four, just over four units per acre for that, uh, pretty much all of that development. And so.
It, it's already subdivided, isn't it?
Nearly all of it. There's, there's.
Nearly all of it.
Nearly, probably ninety percent of it. There's actually a multi-family component of their master plan that is, would be the last area um, that they would, that, that would be developed in their master plan. But it consistently has been, uh, for just over four units per acre. And, uh, that's pretty similar with, uh, the areas to the, to the south of Red Creek Springs Road, uh, that.
And nothing we're doing here is gonna change that.
Well, it's up to you guys. Um, city council is the ultimate authority, but I, if according to the comp plan, we're gonna try to stay within what the guidelines are of the comp plan. And suburban-style development, we're going to try to keep that. Now, if, uh, Senate Bill, uh, two thirteen, if some of that is actually passed and acted, um, that could have impact. Because any residential, uh, lot could have potentially four units. So there, there could be some things that come out of the state legislation that could have a factor on it. Um, I don't see that the, uh, R-one and R-two areas of the city are gonna have dramatic, uh, introduction, introduction of, uh, large-scale, uh, density, um, heights that would be above what would be normally, you know? Uh, basically can have up to a two-story, uh, house in an R-one and R-two. I wouldn't see that really changing there. The other R-three through R-five residential districts, I could see more density and more height, uh, in those areas.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Hobson?
Seeing none, thanks, thank you for that thorough overview, Scott. Okay, and it's eight thirty-four and I conclude this work session.